Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting, the work session of the Kentucky Board of Education to order. Before we begin our work session today, I want to acknowledge with deep despair that so many of our fellow Kentuckians are experiencing as they pick up the pieces following the catastrophic flooding in the eastern part of our state. Yesterday, the Kentucky Department of Education held the first virtual superintendent's huddle for our flood-impacted districts so that our agency can better establish how to support the immediate, the short-term, and the long-term needs of our districts. Immediately, the people in these states are looking for loved ones, finding a safe place to stay, and dealing with the shock and trauma of what they've been through. Their needs will change as the recovery process continues. On behalf of the Kentucky Board of Education, please know that our thoughts, prayers, and commitment to serve are with our eastern Kentucky school districts as we and the KDE stand beside you throughout the long recovery process. With that, I'd like to ask Meredith to please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Here.
Holly Bloodworth.
Here.
Patrice McCrary.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Joanna Stevens.
Here.
Jude DeLa.
Here.
Okay. Chair, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you. As the first order of business, I want to have us pause and welcome two new members to our Board of Education, Joanna Stevens and Jude DeLa, our student member of the Board. We've had a chance to talk with both of these members, and Joanna, you were with us at our meeting in Frankfurt. Jude, and you are welcome. Please call on all of us as you establish yourself. And I just want to say, on behalf of the student voice, we expect it, we need it, we rely on it, and look forward to your full participation in our deliberations. This work session begins to address a very important strategic component of our work, and I would dare say an important aspect of the foundation and framework of what we do, understanding our role and responsibilities in the United We Learn, a vision for the future of public education. We're really challenged now to keep up with what we ask for because when Jason joined us as Commissioner, we asked Dr. Glass to help us articulate a vision of the future for education in the state for which we could dedicate our earnest efforts to achieving. And I think Commissioner Glass has worked with the citizens of the state and with us to help us move forward in that regard. But we have work to do, and the work session today is to help us understand the vision, the work of United We Learn, and to have us really embrace the strategic goals of the initiative and to understand the policy framework and foundation from which that initiative will proceed. So, Dr. Glass, I'd like to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Hi, everybody. It's good to see all of you and delight to be here. I know that everyone traveled some distance to come here, and it's the first time since I've been with you, and I think in a couple of years that you actually had a retreat. Since this board has been convened, have you had a retreat?
Yes. Exactly. This is first retreat.
Okay. Well, and I think that the history of the State Board was to have this meeting at Dale Hollow Lake, and so that location was filled up. So Meredith went above and beyond to find this spot, and so all of the logistics that you see pulled together, she and the rest of the team have really organized, so. And I do want to state for the record that we had a trivia contest over lunch, and the all-female team clobbered everybody else. They were really good, a little too good, if you ask me.
That's only because Joanne was our team leader.
A little too good. We now see the long-term impacts of women starting to outperform boys in school, so it's coming home to roost, I think. But thinking ahead to the future is really where I wanted for us to spend some time today. We've got a couple of exercises or activities for you to engage with. The first of those is thinking about some trends or changes happening in the world, and the second is around some future scenarios that may be coming to education. So this future planning is important. It helps us look out above just the immediate horizon and start thinking about what the world will be for the kids that are in our schools now. And we can take some things that are happening now and extrapolate from that and imagine what the future may be like. So we're going to engage in some future planning, some thinking about the future, and consider how that meshes with our United We Learn vision, how does that work together? And if it doesn't, we need to have a conversation about how we can make that fit together in a better way. But also, we hope to demonstrate a concept that, at least in deeper learning circles, is called synergy. And the concept of synergy is that the experiences for students in terms of deeper learning are the same kinds of shifts and experiences that adults appreciate in learning. And there's a synergy between student learning and adult learning. And when we ask adults to facilitate learning shifts for students that are deeper, more meaningful, more relevant, one of the barriers that we run into is that the adults haven't experienced that themselves. They don't know what that looks like because a lot of us experience, our experiences in school were around direct instruction and receiving content or information. And so that's a challenge, is how do we get the adults to experience the same kinds of things that we'd like to see happening in our classrooms? So we've challenged the staff over the next couple of days to think about, how can we demonstrate some of these deeper learning experiences with you? And really, I think, take advantage of the talent and expertise that's on this board. That was another, I think, recognition that we had a few months ago, was that we really have a lot, a depth of talent, experience, and expertise that is at this table. And when we're just pounding you with information on a regular basis, we're not really taking advantage of that fully. And so we wanted to engage you in some different ways as well. So with that setting the stage, you have in front of you a couple of cards. So what we're going to focus on first are these future trends of the world. So each one of these cards takes a concept or something happening in the world right now, an emerging trend, and then extrapolates it out into the future and tries to imagine, where will that go? And so what I'd like you to do is, each of you have two different cards of two different concepts. Read through that card. I'll give you a few minutes to read through it and think about it. And then, in pairs, and so you two can make a pair, you two, I'll move out of the way and let y'all make a pair, and then there. And we'll move around so you get the opportunity to pair with some different people. Answer these questions together. What do these trends mean for the types of experiences young people and adults should have in our schools, and what changes might be necessary to things such as curriculum, assessment, technology, facilities, scheduling, school culture routines? How might school need to change if these future trends come to pass? So again, just take a couple of minutes, read through your two cards, and then pair with your partner and talk about what was on your cards and see if you can answer this question. So we'll give you a few minutes to do that. I'll let you know when to come back together.
Thank you.
Okay. So hopefully, that was energizing, probably some trends that are exciting, some that are terrifying, thinking about the future. But I wonder, in the context of this question, what do the trends mean for changes in our schools? If some of you could share out what y'all talked about.
I don't care to talk about the, this is about the health of our planet and people. And let's mainly talk about the young people. Loneliness, anxiety, depression are becoming more prevalent among young people. And I think we're seeing that more and more each day, that the scary thing about it is, says there's a 20% increase, but it was between 2007 and 2012 is when this was done. You can imagine, over the pandemic and this COVID, how much that has increased over time. There's no question about it. And so, you know, our young people are getting, they say 70% have anxiety, and so many have bullying and drug addiction and those type of things. And we can't control what happens at home, what they get at the house, but we can't control what happens in our schools. And, you know, we need to make sure, and I think most districts are doing that, are adding a lot of counselors for these kids. We need to have teachers and people in the school district mentoring these kids and knowing what's going on in their lives and things, and maybe train them to be able to see when it gets really bad that somebody needs help, so they can get them some help. And so we need to train the teachers for that. We need to make, and we talked about school culture, we need to make school a place where kids want to come to, a place where they enjoy coming, they feel safe, it's a place that they can come and feel like it's a place they want to be and enjoyable. And the most important thing, I think, that an administrator can do at their schools is to have a good culture. And that's number one thing. If kids don't feel like they want to be there, they don't feel safe, they're not going to learn, I don't care how good you are. So you need to have a really good culture, and you need to make your school safe and a fun place to be. And I think about back when I was a principal and things, how much we focused on the test, took away recess and PE and some things, and that's awful. You know, these kids need time to socialize with one another, they need time, they need to exercise. It shouldn't always just be about the test. It should be about their mental health, and I think that all goes together.
Thank you, Steve.
And I had a card that I had went totally along with that, and it was about the access to mental and physical health care is limited and inequitably distributed. And while we see the rise in the mental health issues, the thing that really struck us is that, this was in 2016, 29% of the ER doctors had patients waiting for more than two days in the ER for inpatient psychiatric beds. And for not being able to get that health care, these kids were seeing more suicides, were seeing worse performance in school, and those kids have to have that help, or we're going to lose them. And I know one thing that some of the, I know we are having more districts who are employing a physician's assistant so that there is an actual medical person who can give services to those children at school. But, and of course, as Steve and I were talking about, so many of the kids that have these needs, you know, they are most vulnerable population. And if they don't get it through school, they're probably not going to get it.
Thank you, Jude. Others?
I thought we both hit the same card, too. When I was, opened up first was the economy and employment, and it talks about automations eliminating many of the jobs, about half of the jobs that used to be around and not going to be around in the future because of the automation. But I've always said, before you have a machine, you've got to have an idea. Somebody's got to have the idea for a machine. And we can't fall into the place where we don't get these kids to be creative, be curious, so that they can be the types that can create ideas. So Sharon, I always thought that enlightenment might change things, but I think fear works better. When we lost the cut-and-sew jobs, when we lost the coal jobs, people started saying, what can we do now? But they look at state government to bring them jobs. They don't realize that we can do some of this, and we've got to get that mentality in the parents. What do you think the number-one export of Kentucky is right now? Should be a tricky question. Aerospace. Aerospace products are the number-one export. Then you look at the battery companies that are coming here. Will they stay if we make sure that we can put value there? If you look at the semiconductor law that just passed to bring manufacturing back to America, they're not going to want to go to Boston and California. They're going to look for other places to go.
Right.
And the loyalty that they see in the southeast is a very important thing, but you've got to have the skills. And I think that you've got to start very early. And the primary program in KARO, I thought was very powerful. I went to their classroom once, when I was in business, I was asked to speak about patents. And they had first, second, and third graders all in one group, and they had been told, bring something in from home that would be normally thrown away and put in a pile. And the challenge they had was to build some way to eat spaghetti more efficiently. And they showed me the three winners. The winner was one who took a Dairy Queen plastic cup that has a hole in the center of it, or cut the middle of it for a straw. They turned it upside down, and they put a fork in it so that you ate it, and so you won. The other one had one of those old Mixmasters and so forth. Then I opened it up for questions, and one little girl, she had to be in the first grade, she said, who got the patent for the patent? That's kind of thinking we got. And I really, I've talked to some legislators, in too many cases, they want to give money to gifted kids, or they want to give them certificates. We need all of them. And I think that a child is gifted in many cases because they've shown they're gifted because they've been given the opportunity to show it. But you've got a lot of gifted kids, I guarantee you, that are in there that don't know they're gifted, nobody else does either. And I think the project base, and I saw at least in one of the quotes in here, don't teach them to have right answers to a test question, teach them how to work on projects, come up with solutions. And then last thing I'd say, Sharon and I said, you've got to almost work on the parents at the same time as the children. You've got to give the parents some hope and some expectation of what needs to come out of education. And so it's tough, it takes time. I don't know how the teachers can do it, but I meant to bring it today. I should have, I have a box that had a kid in it, and I may have told this story before, that I was given when I was a junior in high school because the science teacher didn't have the money to buy any of them, so he gave me this free one he had. And I took it home and read a book about how to make a capacitor and inductor, and had a little solar cell, and you put this circuit together and shine light on the solar cell, and it beeped. I, man, this is cool. And that's why I was an engineer, that was it. That was it. And I was a junior in high school. And so I think we're doing a lot of things right, it's just a question, we have the time, and we can give the teachers the time and give the attention, because it's so much easier to teach 38 people the same thing, but to try to bring out their differences is what every teacher wants to do, and you do it in many cases, but we've got to do more of it.
Thank you.
And some of those differences get denied, if not, I mean, just patently denied, which brings up one of the cards that I got regarding demographics, identity, and power. It's a powerful combination of ideas, and the unpacking of it is all about the level of representation of identifiable minority groups and cultures, Hispanic, Black, and White, and male, female, and their representation in the power grids, if you will. And while we've made progress, significant progress, and Lord, I don't even want to reflect on the history, historical cost of the progress that we've made, and it makes me want to think about, okay, going forward, can we make progress and not have life loss and a sense of threat to people who already have power? So, two things. I think we've got to refine the voice of demand for educational outcomes, such as Lee was articulating. I mean, parents need to, you know, not demand that the kid knows the right answer, but I want them to come up with an original question of their own, that they say, okay, now, having learned this, I want to know that next. And so the outcome is, can you, not can you answer all the questions right, but can you write me a new question that's going to challenge our instructional process? Also, I think we ought to start courting these folks who already have power and help them think of the future in which the kids that we have right now are the only ones we're going to get. They are future contributors to the economy, or they are future cost burdens to the economy. Which one do you want to have? And ask the employers, how do we get these kids that we have right now ready to be your employees? And bring that conversation together. It's like, we can't keep doing what we've always done. We've always been faithful, sincere advocates for the best that we know for our kids. But the best that we know for our kids was largely based on what was good for us, and that was knowing the right answers, I have to say. But now we've got to go to bat for kids who need to know how to ask new questions.
At this side of the table.
Don't jump in there, round robin, so I can do this. One of mine involved student debt. It's growing, and we've all seen that. I mean, just in the last few years, we've seen it escalating at a rate, and the higher college tuition coming into play. But the most sobering part to me was on the back of the card, where it showed the data, and it talked about the massive number of students who are, not only do they have the significant debt, but then they are not graduating from college, so they are not building the capacity to pay off the significant debt. And to me, that's terrifying for these individuals. This has put them in a cycle that is very difficult to overcome. So we need to think about what we can do about this now. One, of course, let's find out why these students are not graduating, what hardship is in play for them. The other, you know, we've got to interact with our universities and get them on the same page as far as amount of money. I vividly recall a conversation I had with a public educator once, and that educator said, you know, we're, in public education, we're given this much money, and that's it. That's what we have to work with. But at the university level, they're able to raise tuition to generate more money. We've got to step away from that mindset, because all that does is put our students into more trouble as far as debt goes. So if we are pushing against students being successful, we're headed in the wrong direction, and that's what the student debt is doing right now. I know teacher educators who will spend the majority of their profession paying off their student debt. They're paying to get to be teachers throughout their educational trek. And my other one, and I think it's a good segue into what Joanna will talk about in a moment, an increasing number of Americans view racism as persistent and significant challenge that our nation must address now. And there again, turning that card over, the data shows, just in a period of five years, the significant increase of awareness that's out there. And I'm going to say, a lot of that ties into social media. People have become more open to sharing, and I believe we have a generation coming up who is ready to embrace the challenge of what can we do about this racism issue. Our educators are in a precarious position right now, and we need to provide as much support as we can, as much information as we can, of how to handle situations in the classroom. These, 73% of young adults have been talking to their family about race and race relations. To me, that's the most positive, encouraging statistic that I've read in a long time, because that means we have a generation who is open to change, to make our world a better place. So now then, our educators need to find their role on how we can set up a culture, a school culture, that embraces not just knowing about these race issues, but being a catalyst of change within the building.
So that does transition to me. And so one of my cards talked about that post-millennials will be the most diverse generation of Americans with social and political beliefs that differ from their older generations. So they are being exposed to different ideas. As a teacher, I feel that's my responsibility, to show them different ways of looking at the world. And as a math teacher specifically, we do that a lot with graphs, and looking even at the graphs that are on the card I was given, just having students notice and wonder, where they get to ask their own questions about things. What do they notice? And then, what do they wonder? Where they generate questions based on the data that's given. But with data that's given, that leads to my other card, that social media is providing a new space for political engagement and activism. How can we teach students to decipher between truth and fiction? That when we're on social media, it has provided a gathering place, and it helps spread the knowledge of racism, the hashtag Black Lives Matter, the hashtag Me Too. But it's also been used for scary things, to organize acts of hate. So how can we teach students to use social media for good, to share political opinions, ideas that are important to them, but to do it in a way that's responsible, but teaching good social media behavior? And that is hard to do because at school, all your social media websites are blocked. But there is value there, and especially for our post-millennials, that that is where they are communicating.
Thank you.
So one of our cards was about chronic diseases and how it disproportionately impacts individuals who are at several different risk factors, kind of piggybacks on what Steve and Joanne were talking about. One of the indicators is stress. So we talked about several things related to stress and how we might increase access to counselors, bringing them up to do more counseling, and also to the nurse, you know, having more access to the school nurse for things that they might get at a regular health provider. I liked what you were talking about with like the nurse practitioner, like just having more access to health care during the school day, perhaps. We talked about curriculum and just looking at things like nutrition, ag, those kinds of things. I mean, having access to healthy food is a problem for some people. So just learning more about nutrition and what to look for and how to have ways to do that. Barriers to physical activity was one we talked quite a bit about. Jude said, really, her only physical education class has been online. So valuing that in schools, and I know in my own school, our recesses were very limited because of our schedule, and it didn't count as instructional time. I mean, that right there says a lot. You don't value play because you don't count it as anything. And like, we would have had to add time onto our school day, which impacted all our other schools' schedules and busing and all of that. So just making sure that we're sending the right messages about how valuable things like play, physical activity are, were some of the things that we talked about.
I think one of like the most important cards that I got was speaking about death due to drugs, alcohol, and suicide, and something, one of like the facts that were presented with me was by, from 2000 to 2015, the increase in suicides was 86% for youth under 17. So this is high schoolers, elementary schoolers, and middle schoolers. 86% of these kids are thinking of suicide, or well, has honestly, thinking of suicide. I don't want to sugarcoat it. Everyone has thought about it, and I don't think we get too much awareness in school about that. I know we kind of get a course that's like, hey, if you need help, go to the counselor. Not a lot of our students are comfortable enough going to counselors. And our counselors are busy with other things, too, I know. Especially on the high school level, counselors are not only there for mental health. They do help with college counseling, and they also help around the school. And so mental health isn't really something that, I know we have counselors there to help for, but not a lot of students are going to actually go to the counselors for help because they don't feel comfortable with it. Admitting to yourself that you have mental health issues is Admitting to yourself that you have mental health issues is one thing, but then admitting it to another person who kind of will have their own perspective on you, that's something else and it's very hard. And then also, drugs and alcohol, something we were talking about was how in our curriculum, we have these classes that speak about drug and alcohol, but it just barely covers the surface. And so, students don't really know how hard it is, or how easy it is to fall into it and how hard it is to recover. And so, some of the programs, like I know, I was part of DARE, and that's something I did in elementary school, but if I'm being completely honest, I don't think that helped or kind of even made an impact. Maybe when I was in the fifth grade, it helped a lot, but growing up and falling under peer pressure and seeing classmates do it, I know, a bunch of schools are dealing with vaping and drinking during school now, so it's how, how do we kind of bring a rise to that? What do we have to do and change the curriculum? If we're adding classes or just providing more resources to students, say like, hey, I know this is something that's gonna be surrounding you, but how do we help you so you don't fall into that? And then, that connects into my other card, which talks about fragile nations. And so, people living in fragile nations go through famine, poverty, epidemics, and terrorism. So, famine and poverty, that's obviously a huge issue, especially with having access to technologies for school and the facilities, and you're just overall not as healthy as schools want you to be in. So, that's why we kind of brought up going to your nurse for checkups. Cause, and access to healthcare, that was on her card too. So, having someone there that you can go to in school to make sure that you're healthy, but also having meals and provided at school, not only for you, but also for your family. Like, you, as a student, you don't want to have to struggle through your at-home life and have to struggle at school. You kind of want to put those two together and help yourself and your family and the people you care about. So, having access to meals. I know one thing that we talked about was having the schools go more green. And even, that's a very economic issue and that's why most schools are kind of struggling, but, uh, risk factor environmentally is pollution. And that helps with, that's very harmful for like, chronic diseases. And so, kind of having our schools go more green and pushing for that will help students kind of get that mentality like, hey, like, we are doing this for people to get better. We want to get better. And having an environment that not only you feel safe in, but you feel healthy in, that really helps with academics and doing better in school.
Thank you. Thanks, all of you. There were four cards that you didn't get to see, so I'll briefly tell you what those are. One is that science is advancing faster than our ethics are. That we really have, and it's troubling implications for genes and how fast we can move information, so that's one. A second one is explosion of gun violence, both in terms of mass murders increasing and just people being killed with guns. A third that you didn't see was global climate change, of which we're experiencing firsthand here in Kentucky with the tornadoes and the floods, some of those things. And then, the last one that you didn't see was just the amount of information is exploding every day. And they go on to talk about that soon you'll, everything will have a sensor and a tracker on it, trash cans and all sorts of things will have, be able to weigh and transmit information in ways that we can't even imagine right now. So, these are all future trends. Thomas Friedman talks about these trends in terms of accelerations, and he makes a great point to say, all these things are accelerating. And when an acceleration comes, if you know that it's coming, like if you're on a rollercoaster and you can look forward to it and know that you're gonna survive it, it's fun. That's a good acceleration. And then when accelerations come that you don't know are coming, or you're not expecting, they're terrifying. So that's some of what we're experiencing with all of these trends that you saw here. So, keep, keep these trends in mind, cause that's, look into the future, imagining what the world is going to be like and how we have to change our schools to prepare our kids for that future.
Can we respond a little bit to some of the other ones?
Yeah.
Because, I believe it was Heidi, Holly's, Heidi, where'd I come up with Holly's comment about taking away play? It breaks my heart to walk into a kindergarten classroom and not see a home living center and other centers out and about. Because as an early childhood teacher, that's where children learn to get along. That's where their social skills came into full play. Not sitting at a table and having a paper put in front of them. So that's one of the, perhaps, facilities or scheduling or school culture or any of those.
Curriculum, valuing it as part of the curriculum.
Curriculum, is to value play and the importance of play and not pushing our youngest of our young into a box that they're going to think is education and will be education for the rest of their lives if we don't make a change. Sorry, platform.
Well, I know we could spend all afternoon on this and then craft our own science fiction dystopian future, I guess, on all these. I want to have us now shift into what the future of schooling may be like. So in your packets, you've got this document here. So, I'll orient you to it, and then what I'm gonna ask you to do is switch partners, because not everybody gets to have Jude as the partner for all day. So, we're gonna, we're gonna move her around. And what I'd like you to do with a new, a new pair, is each, each pair is going to look at one of four different scenarios. So if you open this up and, and, I'm sorry, let me give you this here, and I've taken over your seat here. I've got the gavel too.
Little habit.
So, why don't we have the group, whatever group Steve ends up in. You look at school extended. And, and what you want to do is look at the, what this future scenario entails, and then be ready to tell the rest of the group what that, what that scenario is all about, okay? So, Steve, that'll be whatever group that you're in. Lee, you'll be on education outsourced, so whatever group you end up with will be on education outsourced. So look at that one. And, Patrice, you'll be on schools and learning hubs. And then Holly, you'll be on learn as you go. So your task is to review just your scenario, understand it, and then be able to relay what that idea or concept is about to the rest of the group. So where this came from is the OECD, the Organization of Economic Cooperation and Development, is an international organization that works on global trade and commerce. And so they convened education, economic experts from all over the world to imagine what's going to happen, what are the future trends in education. These are the four future scenarios that they imagined. So, let's mix up the groups and then jump into this. And we'll take a shorter amount of time, about five minutes to review this and be ready to present. Thank you. All right, I think, let's start with schooling extended, scenario one, so that was.
You did such a good job of playing that to me.
Tell us, tell us what this one's about.
You did a great job of playing that to me. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, this is a big vision thing here because you've got to understand that, I mean, for OECD to do, to be doing this, kind of reminds you that the, first of all, the knowledge about practice and learning is exploding along with the knowledge about everything else. How people learn is at the root of the innovations that we need to make. It's not a whim. It is based on the science of our work. It's not just because we like project-based learning. What we really like is for learners to be in charge of their learning. And the only way they get to learn how to do that is by doing it. Just like, that was the only way we learned. So, that's gonna change practice in ways that learning is not just gonna happen in school, it's gonna happen anytime we can help a learner be aware of a question that they have and help them articulate that question. They will recognize themselves as authentic learners and credential themselves to be learning all the time. The trick is, how do we document that so that we know it and we can make sure the student knows it so that they can go to the next level? And we can report to our sponsors that this is happening. So the documentation is the big question. It's like, what do you need to know in order to know that this kid is becoming a real, mature, authentic learner, like we talk about in the profile? Okay? A real person in charge of their, of their learning. So, that means teachers are gonna have to know different stuff too. I mean, Lee and I talked about, you know, we got credentialed by knowing the answers to the questions. That's not the skill that we want in the learners of the future. We, so, how do we develop teachers who are real skilled at helping students develop as learners, rather than develop as the font of the right answers? And, that's gonna put us in relationships with different people because we will need a different orientation to validate what we're doing or to understand where we need to make interventions, because we're not actually doing what we say we want to do. So, that means schooling doesn't happen behind the closed doors of a building or in the halls of a university. Schooling happens as a part of a dynamic community, even as a part of the economy, and it has to function and contribute within that context, or we will lose sponsors. Folks will show up to do the job that we are not willing to do.
Thank you. I think this one is sort of the incremental, like the system of schooling is still there, but there are lots of changes around where learning can happen. Credentialing is different, certifications are different, credits are different, things like degrees and how you earn them, all of that can, expands, but the, the structure itself is still there.
You have specialized learning by teachers, you know, they have their own, you know, it says here, teacher education, they impact teacher education and professional development because you got, they use more specific areas each teacher might have to be able to present to other students and stuff. And it's not just here, but it's across the, across the world.
So how about developing expertise within the teaching profession so that you have somebody at every school who's real good at instructional design? Not everybody can be real good at instructional design, nor do you need that. Not everybody needs to be real good at assessment, but some do in every school. Some people need to be, so to help, even in our work, to help teachers identify and develop their passion. Not everybody's passionate about instructional design. But some are, and they are real good at it. Some of them help to design those cards and the, and the learning that we'll be engaged in today. I mean, these are people who are real good at that. And, so, they need to be able to market themselves and know that they have those skills. And schools of education can help them understand that as a part of their training. Understand what your passion is within the education workforce. And develop that passion, pursue it, contribute it, and we'll all be better off for it, but not everybody has to be expert at everything. That's not possible. So, the diversity within your teaching staff is across that spectrum of functions that you have to fulfill expertly and strongly and competently at the journeyman level. So, schools of education can be thinking in those terms, not just how many got certified, but how many of those certified know what their passion is and what they're going to become expert in. It's a different standard, isn't it?
Absolutely. So let's transition to now a little more radical model, education outsourced. So, tell us what this one's about.
Well, I'll start out. Lee will have a whole lot more to say about this. But, my first question, if education is outsourced and taken away from the government and the government overseeing the education, then who's going to pay for it? And who is going to oversee it? And those are big questions that I have that seem to.
Don't want that.
Be a question over every aspect of this model. However, we did find, we did find that there were, there were good points and I think this sounds like the answer, if you look at it on, at face, just on its face. But when you start digging into it and say, how would this be done? In a state like Kentucky, it's very difficult to, for me to answer those questions.
I have a real negative response to outsourcing because I've seen too many people who want to outsource things like food services at universities because the Marriott will come in and buy you all new kitchen equipment. But, six years later, when they're trying to get their cash back out, your quality goes down. When you look at this country, we wanted to outsource everything we outsourced, and then we can't even make masks in this country. So I think that outsourcing is an easy thing for some people to think they can do. But if you talk about outsourcing for children's education, who's gonna be able to afford to outsource? The parents who have the money to do it? And, and she just said a moment ago, the, and it's pointed out here under the organization structure, is that the rules go by the wayside. Because whoever you outsource to, they do, basically have their own rules. One thing we did like is the flexibility that you can have. If you have a wide array of things you can choose from, then you can get different things done. And I guess it, it made me go back, when I think about flexibility, I go back to that primary program and the portfolios that got Xed out in Kira. Because you, you let first, second, third graders go, those who can go fast, go fast. Those who can't go so fast, don't get flunked in the first grade. They find out by the time they get a little older, they can compete. And we did away with that because it cost too much. And it was, it was too hard on the teachers and they weren't given the resources. When you get down into the professional status, task and certification, I do think there's a population of people who are at an age that are place-bound and they need to be able to get certification some way. And fortunately, we can offer some of it during, for the state offered programs, but others, they may have to go to Phoenix, or whatever they call that, now, Phoenix University or whatever. There are things that I think people need to do in order to move up the, their economic skills, and they may have the money or their companies may pay for them to get that piece of their education. What I find about this group that did this, I was on the Business Education Forum for a number of years with the head CEOs of corporations and university presidents, and what they really wanted us to do was the soft skills. So you're failing us because you don't teach these kids how to work together, they don't teach how to solve problems, they don't think for themselves. And so I think, getting back to some fundamental stuff, and it hit me a minute ago, I can tell you all kinds of anecdotes about things going on around the state that groups are doing, but we gotta go from the anecdotal successes to the operational successes. And, you know, we know, I think we know what to do, it's just a question of getting the resources behind it. And putting together a plan that's sellable. But, in the last one, wanting the schooling system to have a wider marketplace, I think all businesses want us to teach a lot of international, I always really tell all engineering students, you need to take the foreign language. You need to do something different than take these mathematics courses and so forth because you're gonna be dealing with the world and you have to be much more international than what we've been in the past. But the general feeling of outsourcing is a scary function as far as I'm concerned. And she agrees, right?
So, you had one, this sort of incremental model, this is a little more radical, but you can see this trend happening, right? Charter schools, voucher models, privatizations, expansion of homeschool options. So all OECD here has done is say, this trend is here, let's play it out. What happens if that, if that model moves forward? So, so, some of these, again, they're accelerations that we can perceive as scary, but this is a possible future, right?
Yes.
So, the third scenario, schools as learning hubs.
Well, did I end up with the right partner or what? This one dealt with schools keeping in place most of their functions, but then finding a new method of showing their, the student competence, which is something this board's discussed at length. And then moving away from uniformity, where it's not a one-size-fits-all type situation. And I'm sitting with the poster child for that type of education. So, take it away, Jude.
So one thing that, I go to a school that kind of represents, not kind of it, mostly represents this scenario. And so, seeing all of these happen, I know, so, schools as learning hubs, it focuses more on personal values and pathways. So you get to choose what you're interested in and you're still gonna get the common like, English, math, science, you're gonna get all the basic knowledge, but you also get the knowledge of something that you think is important, something that you want to be a part of. So personally, like, I'm in a pre-nursing pathway because I want to go into nursing So personally, like I'm in a pre-nursing pathway because I want to go into nursing. So although I still get my English and my history and my science course, I also have an hour each day where I am, my teacher, um, my previous teacher, she got her doctor in nursing. And this is when we learned about, um, just all things medical related and patient, how to work, how to speak with patients and protocols and that sort of thing. So that's something that I was interested in. And so schools as learning hubs, students get to choose their interest. I also noted how here it says it's experimentation is very important. So going out of just the normal school schedule where this, there's this many blocks and you do this every block. I know my school, we do three days content and two days kind of just you sign up for your teachers and if you need like remediation, if you need help, need to work on anything. So it's not like the typical every day you're doing something. It's three days we're learning content and two days we're out here and experiencing and working on things that we already need to work on, um, broader learning. So focusing more on the career aspects and more than just English and math and more real world, world. And then networking was a huge thing that's mentioned here, partnerships with different organizations. And, um, here it says, uh, external institutions such as museums, libraries, residential centers, techno, technological hubs and more. But just having these partnerships with communities, companies in your community that you can give those resources to your student and that's very important. For example, in my pre-nursing pathway, my school's partnered with St. Elizabeth. So a lot of our students go and intern at St. Elizabeth or Cincinnati Health and they get internships and we're working real world with nurses and with patients. So schools as learning hubs kind of take the student and their student's interest and from there they make a personalized pathway.
And Jude made reference to the point that they had multiple visitors coming in to observe and learn. So there's hunger for this. There's, there's a taste for it out there.
And so another one of these trends, we already see elements of it in place, right? This is, this is happening right before us. Uh, and then the one that just blows my mind, the last one.
Yeah, well, this one is called Learn As You Go and it's, I think, extreme, um, the extreme. It's dismantling schools completely. Uh, so everyone has access to lots of learning and go for it is basically what this one is. We were talking about what would teaching look like in this scenario? And really, we talked about maybe like a Disney vacation planner. Like I'm the concierge of your educational and I assume you would employ me and I would kind of navigate your learning journey for you. And, um, then I would get paid by these people personally. We just talked about how much wider the gap would become in a situation like this. It sounds like, well, yeah, there's all of this learning out there. You can be whatever you want to be and you just have to look it up and study it yourself. But we just know about motivation and the, and like teachers are so much more than Disney vacation planners in that we, you know, make these relationships and encourage children to find their paths. And go ahead if you want to add something.
I think the concierge analogy was really what we thought of. And then also it doesn't, like, you're learning as you're going, what if you change your mind? Do you start back over? So we just, lots of questions on like, what age would you start this?
It feels very, uh, I don't know, isolationist, you know? I'm learning my job, so I'm going to be with all the people that are learning how to, to cook French food, but I don't know how to really prepare anything else. That's all I know.
We thought it made sense for like learning hobbies, like talking about cooking. It makes sense, but as far as other things, we thought they needed more, more information.
It seems like it would be really hard to solve problems because you have such a narrow view of and scope of the world.
And we're also not sure who's in charge.
Yeah, right. The, it seems like the learner would be. So, um, all of these scenarios were put together in 1990, I'm sorry, 2019 and 2020, pre-pandemic, right? So now imagine the experience that students went through during the pandemic when a lot of the concepts that are in here actually happened. And we saw lots of negatives from that, but you see the infrastructure for this kind of learning, how, how, if you played it out again, how this could take off. So, um, you know, one of the things to wonder about is which one of these is probably going to happen? I don't know the answer to that. Probably some mix of all of it, uh, really. But what I think we can expect is that the opportunities for learning are going to be broader and more diverse than what we have now. The power over the time, place, manner of learning is going to be more in the hands of parents and students than it is now. So those are kind of two cross-cutting themes that move, I think, through all of these. There's a diverse delivery model for how learning takes place. And parents and students much more empowered in the choices they have and how they navigate that diverse learning, um, those diverse learning opportunities. Those trends I think are cross-cutting that will probably continue forward. So hopefully at this point, your heads are full of what could the future be for all sorts of concepts in the world? And you've thought some about, um, what the future of school could be like? If we think out five, 10, 15, 20 years, what could it be? So now we're going to pull you back a little bit into Kentucky's context and think about United We Learn and the wisdom that was in what Kentuckians told us in United We Learn. So the three big ideas, let me orient you to those again real quickly. They are first, change the experience of the students so that that experience better prepares them for the fast-moving, accelerating world that they're going to inherit. So in the context of the first exercise we did, that seems like it has a heck of a lot of wisdom. Second, um, bring innovation and change to our schools and at scale, particularly around assessment and accountability. So there was this real sense that our system of standardized measures and, and outcomes measurements wasn't capturing, uh, the kinds of learning that were going to be really important. And in some ways, they were inhibiting the kinds of shifts that we needed. And third, find ways to collaborate and genuinely work with our communities and the people in them in more genuine and authentic ways than we have in the past. So work with parents, teachers, and most importantly, students in ways that we haven't in the past and empower them in ways that we haven't. So those were the three big ideas. And so I, I have to tell you that after I think about what the conversations you just had with the trend cards and then what we, um, thought through with these OECD future scenarios, I am stunned at the wisdom of what Kentuckians told us where we needed to go with United We Learn. So what we're going to do now is give you an opportunity to move to three different centers and learn more deeply about United We Learn and those three big ideas. And Meredith is going to facilitate that in world record pace because I've ran, I've failed miserably at my timing.
It's okay, it's good. It was well worth it. So, um, in just a moment, each of you will get a little packet. And so we've been joking that our trip to Lake Cumberland is like going to camp. So we're going to run with that theme. And so when you rotate through your centers, you're going to be earning merit badges. Uh, and so the facilitators of your sessions, uh, will provide you those merit badges as you learn about the big ideas. Um, you'll also notice that on your trail map, which is the cover of your book, um, there are some icons next to each place that you'll put your merit badge. And I want you to kind of pay attention to those because when we gather back together, uh, we're going to kind of use some visual cues to help us think about the big ideas so that we can remember them when we transition to our communications, um, portion of the agenda today. So on your folders, you each had a number next to your name. And so that is the group that you're in. We have three groups. And we're actually going to have Commissioner Glass's group, which is going to be group number one at the front where he was seated. So we'll have that be group number one. Then we're going to have group number two here at the end of this U and that will be Mickey Ray's group. And then group number three is going to be over where Holly is and that's going to be David Cook's group. So I will pass these out and then you can meet up with your group. All right, hopefully you all successfully completed your three merit badge quest. If, if you missed a badge because you were so enthralled in the conversation, let me know. I have extra stickers. I don't want you to have an incomplete map. So before we pitch to Tony, I do want to just talk a little bit about those, um, clip art images that were next to each of the badges because I think that that is helpful. And I know some of the groups talked a little bit about them. So the first stop was with Dr. Glass, uh, collaboration with communities. And that was next to the trail marker. Uh, why do you think that we chose that image for that station? Why do you think we chose a trail marker?
Is it showing us the pathway?
Showing us the path, that's right. So, um, as Dr. Glass has shared, all of this started with listening to Kentuckians. And so we had, um, a survey that went out, we had our listening tour, and then we had the coalition. And we're going to continue listening to our communities and collaborating with them as part of the Kentucky United We Learn Council. And so we'll continue to have our direction, um, sort of highlighted for us with our collaboration with communities. So the next station was vibrant learning experiences and you had a backpack. And I heard Mickey talking about the backpack, so everyone should know the answer to this, but why did we choose a backpack for that station?
You want to fill it up, but you want me to get it out too?
Yep, you want to fill it up your backpack? If we think about that trail analogy, you're going to have all those supplies and you'll need to use them throughout your time wandering in the woods. But if we think about our students, they're going to be through their educational career, gathering up all of those skills and dispositions that we know they'll need to utilize in their futures. And that's what we talked about this morning, we know, or this afternoon, we know that, um, the future is coming and we need to be prepared for it. We want our students to be prepared as well. The last icon was the binoculars and that's where we went with innovation. Why do you think it's the binoculars for that big idea?
Bright idea.
Bright ideas. What else when we're thinking about innovation, if we think about binoculars, what do we use binoculars for? See what's coming ahead, right? So we know that, we heard from our communities that they want us to think about innovation within assessment and accountability. So we can think about those binoculars looking ahead to where we're going and we need to prepare for, um, for that, that next step. So we're going to talk about the big ideas a lot, uh, in the, in the days ahead. Uh, and some of that will be asking you to share with your communities about United We Learn. So we are happy to have Tony here to talk through, uh, this next part of our agenda.
All right. Can y'all hear me okay? All right. So, um, this initially was going to be a two-person team. We had my communications partner, Tammy Schiff was supposed to be here. Unfortunately, she got the COVID bug. So, um, Dr. Glass is going to help me with part of the portion of this, um, about this. So we're going to build on this understanding of United We Learn and talk to you about how each of you as key influencers, i.e. board members, can support this work by engaging within your communities and serving as influencers. I'm going to speak briefly about the challenges of being a key communicator as board members, some ways to think about the unique role that you can play and how to handle challenging communication situations that will come your way. All right, so this is our, just our agenda. Let's talk about communications, the good, the not so good, and how to use it in your arsenal as a board member. We only have a short time, so I'll cover, um, the basics of what you can do communications-wise to support the United We Learn vision, what effective communications looks like, and then how to deal with those wicked problems and difficult people. So I'm going to pause just for a moment, um, for you to share your experience. Lovely photo of Dr. Todd there. And I would like you to grab something. I think you each have notebooks to write on. And just for a moment, just think about a communication-related situation that did not go well. Did not go well and how you handled it. Jot it down so you can look back at it in a few minutes. So I'm going to set the timer for about 90 seconds. All right. So in thinking about your examples, uh, did you feel really equipped at the time to be a communicator? We often have those moments afterwards where we replay that situation and you think in your heads, I wish I would have thought to say this or I wish that conversation had gone that way. And your hindsight conversation goes completely different. That's very normal since in the moment, stress, emotions, being surprised at the situation or by different people, um, and being unprepared kicks in. And as a board member, you're constantly aware of the visible and public roles that you play, which add to the complexity of being a communicator. Board members can be great partners. Board members can be powerful partners amplifying the Kentucky Department of Education's messages, providing additional perspectives and cultivating helpful relationships to move the work such as United We Learn forward. I think I've lost my slides here. I know some of you have been on the board longer than others. While others are somewhat new, two of you are appointed to represent students and educators. This is a key advantage to have all of these perspectives serving on the board. And to ground us, here are some perhaps obvious things that board members can do to support KDE and especially the overall communications and advocacy efforts. So as you can see, you can prepare, you can practice, you can ask questions. You choose words and you're messaging carefully, knowing the facts. You, you're an advocate for, um, for public education wherever you go and you're modeling the behavior that we want our students and staff to emulate. Um, and most importantly, I think, um, from a communication standpoint is telling the human story and not being afraid to talk about the tough issues that are in front of us. So we have some signs of effective communications. Uh, one of the reasons today's agenda is packed with information about a key initiative such as United We Learn and others is to help you leverage your position and those multiple roles to build trust across stakeholder groups, engagement and alignment and the support of this work. Please know that KDE staff can do a lot of support and serve as support roles as communicators, including knowing how to gracefully navigate the mindful fields or challenging issues and/or people. All right, so this is going to be our first activity. So if you can hand out, I've got, Jackie's going to hand out. We're going to go over the classic elevator speech. So you will have, this is, I'm going to read the instructions to you in groups of three. I guess you can just kind of break out, as long as you have more than one, so you have a group. You'll write up a one quick, two-minute elevator pitch about United We Learn and share out these to the group so that we have about three groups of three. And then we'll hear one elevator pitch from each group. You have three minutes to get your thoughts together. The idea is to be, to be comfortable enough with the topic that you can be spontaneous. So i.e. you're in an elevator, you're in a car, having a conversation with somebody and somebody brings up innovation and education and you're put on the spot. Uh, you need to number one, pick the type of constituent you're going to be pitching it to and then think about what United We Learn is, why it's important, and what is that one thing you want that person to relate? And I will start your timer now.
Tony, if I might just, um, so thinking about the work that we did over the past hour in this elevator speech, speech exercise, hopefully you've gotten enough, um, context to inform this. So we talked a lot about where the future is going to be and we've talked about how schooling is changing. And, and you had an opportunity to learn more deeply about the components of United We Learn. So now I think this exercise is really to ask you to pull all that together. And if you had two minutes in an elevator with the governor or a legislator or a school board member that was going to be influential on bringing this to life in their community, what would you say? Okay, now what?
All right, we're starting the timer. You've got two minutes. You've got some extra time there.
So we need to form into groups of three.
Yeah, group, groups of like three, so you all can.
So we'll have two groups of three and then a pair. Except we can't let Holly monopolize Jude, so she needs to move her out.
So one, you can go there, yeah. So one, two, three. Jason, you make three over there. All right, so we, you guys can stay in your groups and we're going to share out, uh, one per, so you can appoint a person in your group to kind of be your spokesperson. And I'm not sure which group wants to go first. Maybe the ones over that are laughing over there, we can, no. But you'll have, you'll have about two minutes. You have about two minutes. So, uh, who wants to go first? Who wants to share? Make sure you start with who your constituent group was and what your message was. Go ahead, Steve. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I don't know. We've got to remember, we're not in an elevator very long. We didn't have many floors in our elevator and things. But, of course, we, somebody's going to ask us about United We Learn, I guess was the question. And we felt like we would say that KD has a new initiative based on going around the state and listening to different stakeholders to learn exactly what, how they felt about what we needed to be doing. And we felt like the communities that we needed to change the way that students learn. We need to be, collaborate with the communities, and that we need to encourage innovation throughout our state and with our students. And then, we got to the floor where we were going.
All right. Anything else you all want to add? You've got a few more minutes. You've got about another minute. Pretty good. All right?
Nothing.
Go ahead.
People around the state or so hang up on test scores, that having some innovation in the assessment process would be good to throw in, do that, even though if you're looking at a way to try to not only have children learn differently, but how to reassess the learning process that they're going through.
And be prepared for the future that's ahead of us.
Great. All right. We decided to challenge ourselves, and we chose to be stuck in an elevator with a legislator.
And Patrice is actually going. We, and we're asked, "Tell me about this United We Learn." Well, this originated by talking to your constituents, the individuals who are voting, and we got their feedback on what direction we needed to head, so you can understand the importance of your constituents in this process. Our major goal is to build future leaders by addressing the best way to instruct as well as the most accurate, the true accountability assessment system in order to determine their levels of understanding. And as we hear the ding go, we know it's very important to leave with an ask. So, we would say, "Here is my card. Please contact me if you have any further questions. I am readily available to discuss anything with you, and we so appreciate your support. We realize that we are on the same page of wanting what's best for the future of the Commonwealth and our children." Ding.
Great job, great job. All right, group three, who would like to share?
Okay. So, I don't know, who's our audience? I think just somebody, like, okay? Just somebody like, "What is this, United We Learn?" Well, United We Learn is about rethinking education in our state. To begin with, to begin the process, we gathered information from stakeholders across the Commonwealth. We strived to be radically inclusive, bringing all the voices to the table, to see where we wanted to take education in Kentucky. So, one of the things that was really important as we gathered this information is to make those learning experiences vibrant for our students. We want things like project-based learning, so that students are learning to be innovative, learning to be problem solvers, learning in collaborative ways, so that that knowledge will then transfer out into the world. Then, we also, another thing that was really important to the stakeholders was our assessment accountability system. So, we want to really be innovative in our process for accountability and looking for ways that will really measure what we are striving to put into our schools. And we feel like right now, what we're doing isn't. So, we're looking to be really innovative in that way.
Great job, great job. Ding. Off the elevator. Great job. So, that, this little activity was just supposed to kind of help you kind of feel comfortable about sharing more about the initiative. And ideally, well, you know, there's more, you know, talking points, things like that that you'll have, and as we develop, you'll get more information, so, all right. So, striving for communication excellence. Love this picture of Lou. Great, great moment there, talking to one of our KSB graduates. And we're going to transition to the power of real. So, when you are talking about some important strategies that you can take advantage of relating to being a great communicator as a board member, this picture captured a real moment. Doesn't it make you kind of smile not even knowing what happened? It's obviously a ribbon cutting at a school gym. One of the women is the principal, the other is the board chair, and at the pinnacle moment, the scissors would not cut the ribbon. The point is that we need board members to be out there, visible in your communities, taking part of these activities, these everyday activities, and being real with your public. Things are going to happen, the scissors won't cut, but you have these opportunities to build trust, loyalty, deep connections, and putting a human face on your role as an appointed board member. Likewise, the DIAUSS is an important and powerful platform for some of the same reasons. And in terms of board members as influencers, you can and should embrace being what we in communications call a key influencer, in person and online. Here are just some ideas of how you can do that. The text is a little bit small, but here are some social media do's and don'ts. Now, I know some of you have accounts, some of you don't have accounts, some of you have, Dr. Todd's looking at me. Some of you have, you know, you're comfortable with sharing. You know, it's not just really about social media, it's really about those opportunities that you have, that you are in front with people having conversation. Social media is just one of those things. Take time when you have a chance, and all of this will be available for you. Just look over some of the do's and the don'ts. There's also some tricks of the trade in terms of how you can reach different audiences and key people when you're trying to reach, you know, we can help you with geo-tagging and making sure you're reaching certain audiences. It really is a great way to reach different people, and we've really been able to expand that reach within the department in the last couple of years. These are just high-level things, and my team will gladly coach you with your online presence. The important takeaway is that it's just a tool in your communications shed, and don't shy away, but to go slow and carefully, and make sure you're teaching, reaching the right audience with your presence and your posts. And then, of course, this one I know you've seen before, since I remember giving it to you a couple of years ago, the golden rule, and before you hit the post button, read your post and take a second look.
Why is my picture on there? What does that mean?
You know.
It was a great example of not tweeting anything you wouldn't want on the front page of the newspaper. So, it was a great photo.
Mine was with wicked people.
As we transition to wicked problems and difficult people, we're going to have a little fun.
So, we know that often when we're trying to influence or talk to people about something like United We Learn, we deal with all sorts of characters that have different agendas, come from different places, they have different levels of understanding, and they may be outright opposed to you. So, sometimes, it's helpful to think about, some of these characters are sort of archetypes. And here's this kind of person, and here's how I, here's some ways that we could deal with them. So, we're sad that Lou couldn't be here, because again, we know she's a huge fan of Stranger Things, so we kind of built this for her. But we took some of the characters in the show. And a show of hands, how many of you have seen Stranger Things? Okay, if you have, right. And in the back, if you have, great. A few of the, a few of the characters, and have, to have you think about them. So, let's see, so we have a handout coming around?
Yep, and it's the same thing that's up on the screen.
Great, thank you. So, some ways to think about some of these characters are, and you may have seen some of them on the show. So, you've got the power junkie, who's up in the upper left-hand corner. They're on their own agenda for power, and sometimes deceptively. They're not always evil or toxic, but definitely want to be in control, so that's the power junkie. Then, you've got the unexpected hero that comes out of the blue to save the day, the, a person ignited by a cause to the point where sometimes they can't let it go. They become obsessed by the single issue. That's the ignited by a cause. The manipulator, you know the type, right? You know the manipulator. The overthinkers, they want to talk about it, all the details and what-ifs over and over, but before actually doing anything, and sometimes to the point that they never actually do anything. They just overthink it. You've got the up-and-comers, the new young talent with the potential to change the game. Totally toxic, we know these kinds of people, no explanation necessary for totally toxic. The enemy-turned-allie, we often encounter these kinds of characters, often unpredictable and a bit fragile, useful in the short term, but trust is questionable and the alliance is usually temporary. Noble and true, count on this one to be there for the long haul. These are the folks that are always there. And then, we've got the bleeding heart, which is Eleven's character at the end there. The bleeding heart, the person who feels deeply, empathizes with others to the point that it drives their behavior into a sword of crusade. So, if you've seen the show, hopefully some of these, some of these characters fit with the descriptions that we have. We had to shoehorn a few in, but I think it kind of works too. And so, what we'd like you to do is reorganize yourselves into new groups of two or three. And we want you to think about one of these characters that you've encountered. You probably had some people come up that have been special in your life, that you've had, had some dealings with, and think about that, that person, and which one of these characters are they? And what were some strategies that you used that were effective with them? And tell us, tell a story to the rest of the group about the interaction with that person and kind of how it went. So, what you'll do again is mix into three new groups, pick out one of these characters that you've actually had an interaction with in your life, tell that story to the rest of the group. And then, the three of you in the group will sort of listen to each other and sort of the funniest, most weird, most entertaining story, that's what we want to hear, share it out to the, to the whole group for recording purposes. I forgot to mention that. So, avoid using any names of real people or fictional characters. So, any questions about the task or what you'll be asked to do?
And you do have your sheet, you should have in front of you a sheet of all the descriptions of all of them, so you can kind of look again, and then also your, what you have up on the screen.
Okay. So, reorganize, pick out a person, and tell that story.
And I will set a timer for about three minutes.
Oh, they'll need more than that.
Five minutes.
Yeah, let's just see how it goes.
We'll just see how it goes. All right.
That's really, that's really ambitious.
All right. So, who would like to go first?
I'll go first. So, I had an over thinker that we were doing a PEP video at school, so that's supposed to be fun. It was during Spirit Week, but as teachers, we got a four-page Word doc, single spaced with our instructions and scripts for our video, so it kind of took away the fun for that video.
So, was that some of the power junkie?
It was the over thinker. But they were also ignited by the cause, and they had a lot of power, and the bleeding heart. It was good intentions, it was good intentions, but it flopped because, and then for the video, we did the whole video, and it was with a GoPro, and the GoPro was not turned on.
Oh, no. So, you do it all over again eventually.
Well, no, we just, we didn't have a video. We just, yeah.
You know I've got a story.
I know you've got a story.
It's not, it's not a funny one, though. Mine is enemy-turned-allie. My very first teaching job was, I started in October and I took, I was an overflow teacher, so I took students from other classrooms, other kindergarten classrooms. And there was one particular teacher who was a stellar teacher, and everybody wanted their child in her classroom. And so, I totally understood there were going to be parents who were distraught. They, I was walking up the sidewalk the day before we had our meet and greet, and a little petite lady walked up to me, and she stopped right in front of me and shook her finger in my face and said, "I don't know you, I don't know anything about you, I don't want to know anything about you, and I don't want my child in your classroom." And I said, "You know what? Give me two weeks, and at the end of two weeks, you are still this unhappy. I will do everything in my power to do whatever it takes to settle what you need." And she stalked away. And two weeks later, she did show up in my doorway and said, "Ms. McCrery, do you have a homeroom teacher yet? I'd like to be your homeroom teacher, if that's okay." And she became the most supportive parent, and I had her second daughter later, and then even a few years later, I got a letter from her saying, "I have gone to school to become a teacher, and I want to say it's spending time in your classroom that caused me to want to go into that profession." So, she was a...
Enemy-turned-allie.
Total turnaround.
Turned out, totally turned around, and in a record time, too. That's pretty quick.
Two weeks.
Pretty quick, that's pretty quick, that's pretty quick. All right, Dr. Todd, or Jude, or?
I had an experience, I was in a conference room in the state Capitol, and those long conference rooms that are really odd-shaped, and on one side of the table was another university president, dean of engineering, and other teachers from that college, university. I had my contingent, and Tom Lozelle was the head of CPE, the Oversight Committee for Higher Education. We were having some discussion about statewide engineering programs, and fell across the table, started to tell me his credentials of where he went to college and all this stuff, and what he thought we should do and what he could do. And I made a comment that what you're doing well would be to create engineers who do very well with your local community, but they very likely wouldn't be marketable broadly because you're training them, you're not giving them the disciplines. He reaches down his briefcase and pulls out a stack of articles, which I guess he published, but that's thick, and reached across the table and slammed them down in front of me. I just grabbed them and threw them over my head. Very uncontrollable. And I then followed up and said, "If you were my faculty, I would fire you right now," and said a few other things, I won't go into that. As we were leaving, I was walking down towards the garage with Tom Lozelle and Dean of Engineering. I said, "Boy, I lost it in there," and they said, "Man, we wish everybody could see that." I'm not sure.
So, Lee identified a new character, which is the know-it-all.
The know-it-all, that's right.
That character before, yeah. Well, thank you all for stories. Hopefully, that brought a little levity to end this conversation. We, I think our goal with this was to get you thinking about the future, get you thinking about the future of schooling, do, go a little deeper into United We Learn and the concepts and how that all sort of fits together, and then do some thinking about how you would talk about it, and understand that some of the people that you're going to talk about with United We Learn may be prickly, they may be hard-to-love kind of people. And so, we hope that some of these archetypes, and Tammy, who can be with us, put together this really great list of sort of strategies to use. So, I think, I encourage you to look over those and think about how you might deploy those if you ever encounter a difficult person that you're needing to communicate with, because it's important that we communicate even with really difficult people. Sometimes, we really need to expand and build our coalition. They're really important. So, there's a bunch of great strategies on here we'd encourage you to take a look at. And that board concludes the sort of, oh, you have one more thing?
Yeah, I just wanted to wrap up with this slide, you know, just remembering, always remembering why you are doing this work. That slide is filled with Kentucky schoolchildren. They're fairly recent, they're from your districts, they're from your communities, they're your fellow students. Never forget why you are doing this work, and remember that when people, when you're talking about it, because I think sometimes you forget, you get so caught up in the emotions that sometimes you forget why, why you chose to, why you chose to do this work and why you've been called to do it, because it is a calling, and you're all very skilled and educated in things that you're doing. And then, the last thing I just wanted to share with you is some next steps. The communications team is kind of compiling a list of, we're calling them key opportunities in each of your board districts. Our target date on this is September of next, actually, next month now. And these are just key opportunities, or meetings, short visits, phone conversations. And the goal is really just to share the three big ideas. So, we'll try to help you get a jumpstart on some things in your own districts that you may not be aware of, but these are things like Kiwanis Club, informal, fornal, you know, anything like that where you have an opportunity to share the vision. And with that, that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Yeah, thanks, team, thanks, everybody.
And I really appreciate that last slide, because I think that media training, one thing you want to do is be consistent with the message, and it would be good to have, and you did right here with these three points, because we need to know what we want to get across, we need to say it our own individual way, but we also want to make sure we get across the points, because you can often pick something and go off on the 10...
Uh, cause you can often pick something and go off on the tangent and it's nice to know what you-
What you can fall back on, absolutely.
Fall back on or what you definitely want to leave them with, so.
That's good. Appreciate it.
We'll be back in, we'll be in touch with you. We'll get you a copy of the slide deck and then, um, all, all of the copies too. I'm not expecting you all to take these all home. I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy of those as well. So, thank you all very much.
Thank, thanks, Tony. Thanks to the three facilitators, uh, that helped us with the different groups. Thanks Meredith for organizing that, uh, other experience. And, uh, in addition to the, the sort of content experiences that we wanted you to have, also we again wanted to show that synergy, right? The kinds of deeper learning experiences we want for students, we need to try and create that for adults. And so we've challenged the staff to try to do more of that. Um, we're going to get it right sometimes and we're not sometimes. So we're learning as we go too. Uh, with that, Madam Chair, I think we transitioned back to regular bo- board mode, whatever that looks like.
I'm going to visit that. I talked to Randy Cole about coming up there sometime to see it.
It's a part of, um, our agenda for, um, innovation and, and improving instruction. We have, uh, also been embracing the, I want to say the idea of the whole child. But that just kind of doesn't say it, uh, quite as fully as we want. Today, um, let's, who's introducing our guest?
So, um, Marty, we've got Dr. Park.
Oh.
And, uh, we've got Nick and Ray.
Okay, Dr. Ray.
We're going to do, uh, hotel first because we have some special-
And Marty Park, please. Uh, and Damian? Okay, great, thank you. Come to the table. Aha, there it is.
Good afternoon, members of the board. We are pleased to be here with you today. And this item is in response to questions that you had regarding the full-time virtual learning regulation that you will actually be seeing tomorrow. So I have with me here today, Dr. Damian Sweeney. And Dr. Sweeney is going to be addressing more of the specific objectives around social emotional learning and the supports that would be needed for the whole child in that virtual environment specifically. So I'm going to turn to review, Dr. Sweeney.
All right. Wonderful. Good afternoon. So today we're gonna, um, we're gonna review some of the learning targets. And just as Dr. Glass mentioned, we really want to model, um, just great instruction and, uh, best practices for adults and students. So today we're going to use the three signature practices from Castle for social emotional learning. And we're going to talk about three different themes, um, that are going to be critical to social emotional health and academic success in a virtual learning environment. Those three themes are continuity in the virtual learning environment, collaboration, which includes voice and choice, and then engaging in student experiences. Finally, we're going to end with, um, optimistic considerations for long-term sustainability. And much of that will loop back to different priorities that you said at the very beginning of our conversation, right after lunch, that you had when thinking about Kentucky public education. All right, so let's get started. When we, when we talk about, um, three signature practices, um, we're talking about a welcoming inclusion activity, engaging strategies, and then again, that optimistic closure. So I've already, just for the sake of time, because I really want you to hear from my good friend Danny Clemmons behind me and his team in Bullet County, I really want you to hear from them. But I also, uh, I want to make sure that we cover some of this and model some of this. So I've asked Patrice if she can just model what, um, if she can just model this inclusion activity. So we're looking at, with Patrice at the teaching gratitude exercise. So she's going to tell us a little bit about who she's grateful for today and why. And as a reminder, we can do these kinds of activities in both an in-person setting and that virtual setting as well. So, Patrice.
I'm grateful for many individuals in my life. Of course, my husband of 45 years, my children, my two adult children, the five most precious grandchildren on the planet. Brilliant, beautiful, handsome. Very, very grateful for those, but it would be remiss of me not to say today, I'm also grateful for the many educators who are today preparing those classrooms. This is not a paid time for them, but they are in those classrooms and they're hard at work. Um, and they are prepping for what will be a successful year. They are a critical lifeline for all of the students who are about to enter those classrooms. So I'm so thankful for the 110% that they're giving.
I love that. And if you noticed as Patrice was talking and she talked about family, I noticed that different board members and my colleagues were shaking their heads in agreement because part of that you could relate to as you reflected on your own family. As she talked about the educators, I saw smiles on your faces because again, you could connect to that. You could relate to that. All right, so that's just another example of social emotional learning and how this can really bring us together. Again, in this virtual environment as well. Next, we've got, uh, Vice Chair Robinson is going to offer a moment of reflection. So Vice Chair Robinson, what is one major impact you've had on educators, students and our state during your time on the Kentucky Board of Education?
Well, I think it's presumptuous to say have already had, but I hope that my time on the board, uh, will reflect a real dedication to the needs of learners and our responsibility to address them all. Because to do otherwise would be malpractice. And I think that, um, that means we've got to understand that move from a time when knowing content and even being real good at making the content exciting for students so that they can, that was good teaching. But that's not good teaching today. That's just the beginning of what you need to know in order to be a good teacher. You need to know more about how to help students understand, identify, articulate their wish to know and their ambition to be really courageous learners. So I hope that, you know, we get that flip in mind and get to working from that, uh, perspective. And that will be very satisfying for me.
What a legacy that would be. Um, and I'm, I'm sure that we'll get there, um, with you at the helm of this board. So, um, as the vice chair. So, um, what I heard you say is that we should be equity centered. Um, we should take, uh, we should take into consideration the individual learner and make sure that we are assessing their individual needs, personalizing education as a result, and then creating a sense of belonging. Is that-
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. I've got Dr. Wes Tucker behind me. He's the deputy chief and the, uh, chief equity officer at the Kentucky Department of Education. He came to us and said, "You know, we were the DEI team, the diversity, equity and inclusion team, but now we're the diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging team." Because the goal of education should be to create that sense of belonging. So I want to give him a huge shout out.
Well, you know, I don't want us to forget, if we're going to be learner centered, we've got to understand that learning takes courage. Cause you didn't know how to do algebra when you got born. You didn't know how to engage and communicate when you, learning takes courage. And so we've got to create the opportunity for students to try, get close, but maybe not close enough. Get close, but not close enough to where they want to go. And make it safe for them to try and try again. So, I mean, that's another way of thinking about what we do rather than give them the exercise, grade it and show them how much they got wrong, but never have them rea- never reinforce how much they got right.
Sure.
And what to take forward the next time they try it.
Yes, so it sounds like, um, ensuring, uh, that that student has positive, is able to take positive risks and that they are in a psychologically safe environment to do so.
Right.
Right? That's also going to be extremely important in a virtual environment. So thank you for saying that. Just quickly, I, I'm going to show you just, I'm just going to discuss the, the larger kind of graphic here. Um, and it goes back to what you said at the beginning. Many of you said, and are along with our student, um, you talked about suicidality and you talked about mental health concerns. And this graphic shows that based on last year's data collected by the KIP survey, that one in five students in Kentucky reported seriously psychological distress in 2021. One in seven seriously considered attempting suicide in 2021. One in 14 attempted suicide in the past year. And one in three, more than one in three high school students reported having poor mental health. Most of the time or all ways during the pandemic. So these are extremely concerning stats, um, reported straight from our students that we need to consider, um, in this virtual environment as well. So we did provide you some research on that. And with that research, you're going to be able to see a little bit more, uh, context for kind of where students are in Kentucky in terms of their mental health. So when we get to our first theme, right, continuity. So continuity in the social and academic virtual classroom. We wanted to give you some, um, some goals. Uh, the first goal is to create a learning environment that honors student voice, choice and co-ownership. As you know, um, one way of finding successful school culture and climate is creating co-ownership in that school. Right? That school or that classroom. So we think it's also vitally important to do the same in this virtual environment. So we have the following suggestions, right? In the virtual environment, we still want to see co-develop procedures and behavioral expectations with students. We still want to see expectations for participation, um, and going over etiquette, uh, through a trauma-informed lens. Uh, we still want to see those mental health check-ins and movement breaks. Again, going back to the, the three SEL signature practices. We know that discipline is important to address it quickly, but also restoratively. So you have that co-owned, um, that co-owned classroom virtually. And then we should also have plans and protocols if we witness something harmful, harmful in this virtual environment, including emergency plans which should be developed to ensure student safety. Um, we should also be considering home visits if possible in our context and, um, and build, build in positive home visits too. Right? So when we visit these homes, it's not just to assess or address an issue, but also to encourage our families to engage with our virtual environment, our staff and our other, um, things that are happening in that environment as well. The next theme is voice and choice. All right, so engaging multiple stakeholders to ensure, uh, to create supportive virtual learning environments. So this is going to be really important. You talked about the importance of relationships. Every student should have a relationship with an adult, a trusted adult, right? So we recommend that virtual schools, virtual programs utilize virtual relationship mapping, right? Where they ensure that all students have that trusted adult. They have a connection to somebody that they truly trust. By doing that, that is going to create psychological safety and more of that sense of belonging that we discussed earlier. We suggest partnering with families to maximize virtual learning success and utilizing surveys and phone calls home. Again, those positive phone calls too. And then creating family engagement, learning opportunities so families can learn from one another. That's going to be important. We're not just talking to our families. We want them talking amongst each other so that they can share, uh, things that have worked and things to avoid. We want to engage teachers and other educators in co-developing practices and policies that will help families navigate virtual learning. And then we want to assess progress several times per year with our students and families. We want to know, how is this going for you? Are there any changes that we can make for you? Um, and finally, we want to personalize learning to meet individual student needs. All right. For our last theme, we wanted to, um, we wanted to create unique and engaging student experiences in a virtual learning environment. So for this, we are going to focus on strengthening peer relationships through breakout rooms where educators visit periodically. We're going to create a virtual social hour. So we've got these really fun activities that make learning in a virtual environment come to life. Right? We're going to flip the classroom. I love that in our proposed, um, in our proposed regulation, we talk about the need for synchronous and asynchronous learning in this virtual environment. We want to have fun with tech tools. We want to create games and opportunities for kids to really collaborate, uh, virtually. We want to schedule one-on-ones based on individual needs or interventions and have office hours so students can drop in. And then we want to create unique in-person activities like field trips, which you will hear from, uh, Danny Clemmons in a little bit about the cool ways he does this at BLVA. All right. One thing that board, that the Chair Young did mention is that she was very interested in social emotional learning in a virtual environment for young students. So we wanted to put a little bit of research behind this. And we just wanted to remind you that while social emotional development is awfully deeply, it's often deeply woven into the fabric of preschool settings, it has traditionally occurred through, organically through everyday classroom interactions such as the communication and enforcement of classroom rules and expectations, adult modeling and norm setting, along with classroom and behavior management strate- set, strategies. Next, virtual learning requires students to draw from a different skill set. Right? So in order for us to draw that different skill set out of our students, we've got to approach teaching in this virtual environment, um, in a very innovative and creative way. Right? And luckily, the Danielson framework of teaching already does that for our teachers, whether they're in person or virtually. All right. Here is just some research that we would love for you to peruse, um, which kind of shows you some different ways that we can approach lessons and activities with preschool and kindergarten students, along with elementary students in grades one through five. Right? We also added some considerations for schools and districts working with caregivers and families. Right? We suggest that our schools and this, this virtual environment, these virtual environment programs create coaching sessions for caregivers so caregivers have a better understanding and feel for navigating the platform that the school is using. Again, we want to focus on continuity of resources, including tier one and two mental health supports. We heard our student talk a little bit about school counselors and I'm a previous school counselor. Right? We emphasize the need for our counselors to be and to offer direct student services at least 60% of the time. So this should also be a key component and priority in a virtual setting. Right? There should also be protocols for accessing mental health supports and virtual office hours for caregivers, caregivers and families. And then we should also proactively recruit virtual students for extracurricular activities. Next, and this is important, we ha- we have to find ways to prepare our families to navigate this virtual learning environment as well. So we have, we, we've given you some questions to consider, um, that our fam- we want to prepare our families to ask in order for them to feel more prepared to navigate this environment. Now, we did talk about an engaging environment and engaging activity. So we've proposed, we've got two scenarios of students. These students are based on my experience as a school counselor, things that we truly see in Kentucky public school education. So I want you to take a quick look at some of these scenarios and imagine how they would benefit in a virtual, from a virtual environment. So let's start with Michael. Fifteen-year-old child, he struggles socially in school. He's dealt with bullying throughout school, um, struggled with maintaining friendships. Due to anxiety, he's exhibited somatic symptoms that have periodically kept him from school. And he's also experienced panic attacks. Traditional school for Michael is not only anxiety provoking socially, but learning has become difficult because Michael is constantly worried about what will happen between classes, at lunch and before and after school. Right? So if you think about Michael's scenario, how could a virtual environment benefit him? Would anybody like to share your thoughts on this particular scenario?
I could see it as a double-edged sword.
Yes.
Because he's going to become more isolated than ever before. At the same time, he doesn't deal with the pressures that he's placed upon himself of being in school and shutting down.
Yeah, so remember, a virtual environment doesn't necessarily suggest isolation, right? One of the key components of that environment and one of the things that we're really trying to show you today is that we can create an environment where kids are connecting, right? They're connecting to one another. They're learning more about themselves. They're learning more about who they want to be and how to get there as well.
I guess more than isolation, I guess, just of viewing remotely rather than in-person.
Yeah.
Circumstance for someone who's trying to get beyond that anxiety.
Sure. So I think it's also important to know that for Michael, there's not just a one size that, that fits him, right? So it, it, it's not necessarily that the virtual environment is absolutely the best case scenario for him or that the in-person environment is absolutely the best case scenario for them. The importance is showing Michael and his family the options and allowing them to choose. The importance is showing Michael and his family the options and allowing them to choose based on his own personal needs. Now let's talk a little bit about Jessica, right? Jessica's an eighteen-year-old with three siblings. She lives in a single-parent household. Her mother works two jobs, including nights, and she's supporting her siblings by getting them up for school, cooking for them, clothing them, and getting them on the bus. She works to help provide for the family as well, but desperately wants to get her high school diploma. Her attendance and grades have suffered due to work and extra responsibilities at home. How would a virtual environment help Jessica?
Give her the opportunity to finish her, her degree.
Very flexible, very flexible so she can work around those issues that she has.
Right, so it's going to provide that flexibility. It's going to allow her to complete something, fulfill a goal, while also maintaining the responsibility she has for her family, right?
Hopefully opening doors so that she can help get her family out of.
Sure, sure. Thank you so much for that. So these are two quick scenarios. We wish that we could share fifteen, or twenty, or a hundred, because every single student is unique, right? And we wanted to just kind of share with you some of the challenges that many of our students face and how they truly could benefit from the option of a virtual environment. All right, now, to finish up, we wanted to give you that optimistic consideration and closure, all right? So I just want you to know that right now, we have one suicide prevention lesson that's mandated by law by September fifteenth of every school year, right? We know that mental, based on everything that we've discussed today and also your, your own conversation, we know that mental health is a prevalent concern and is a priority of the board. So perhaps we should have conversations about implications of a one-time, early in the school year opportunity for kids to talk about mental health through social, through suicide prevention and potentially see if there are opportunities to increase opportunities to, to talk about mental health and suicide prevention in the future. So let me just ask you how you would feel about that? How you would feel about an ongoing conversation about continuing to talk about mental health, specifically as it pertains to a virtual school environment and while also coupling that with suicide prevention?
I think it's needed. At the high school, we do our suicide prevention at the beginning of the year, but being honest, it's, it's in there with all the other trainings when you're teaching them to do the drills. So it kind of loses its emphasis that it deserves. So I would be in, I would support offering it throughout the year. I think that that would be beneficial for students and teachers, just to be the reminder that we need to focus on the mental health with our content.
Yeah, I'm so glad that you said that, and I'm so glad that you talked about the teachers too, because we're talking a lot about social emotional learning, and research shows that we really need to start with our adults and then trickle down to our students, right? We've got to make sure that we are, that our, that our adults feel this sense of well-being and that they're being taken care of so they, so they can do the same for their students. And this is the case in both an in-person or virtual environment as well.
I think our parents too, are, they need an understanding of this. It's not something just to sweep under the rug. You know, your child's just not sad today about something. They need to know how to talk with their child at any age.
Yes, I've seen, I've been invited to different school districts in the past to talk to, to talk at family events about, about mental health, right? So that their families feel more equipped to talk with their students. So I hear exactly what you're saying, and I'm seeing that need across our state. I hear you. Any other thoughts?
Let me remind my fellow board members that this topic from another angle is going to be before us tomorrow as we consider the, this is the final consideration of the proposed regulation regarding full-time enrolled online virtual and remote learning. This is a regulation that will impact students of all ages. And I think that, you know, we've been informed and encouraged to be optimistic, but perhaps we also have some questions about how we can be vigilant regarding the quality of these instructional experiences.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sweeney.
All right. So I get the honor to introduce some special guests, and that's really the exciting part of this conversation. As our special guests are coming to the table, as I introduce them, I would like to make a couple of comments. Number one, the, the very fact that you care about this topic and continue to ask the same questions that, that we have as a team at the, the agency is extremely vital to developing the types of high-quality vibrant experiences that we're talking about. I would go as far as to say that, and not to go forward into regulatory conversations for tomorrow, but I think it's important to, to understand that. And I would go as far as to say that the, the proposed regulatory language that you have before you is extremely strong. I would stack it up against any other state that is trying to do this work or who has engaged in this work in the past. So that, that's important to note. A couple other comments that I think you will hear today from, from our team, from Bullock County Schools, is that you're going to hear them speak to addressing and working with and supporting experiences for each and all and every student that they have. And so getting creative to serve students, you're going to hear them, and it actually ties perfectly into the exercises for today. You're going to hear them speak to the desire to, to, to not have to outsource or not have to look at families and say, we don't have an experience designed for you. You need, you need to leave us and maybe homeschool or something else. And so they've engaged in this work because they believe that they have teams of people who can serve students in the very best way. We believe that as well from a public education perspective. We want to keep our kids. This is good, good acceleration that you're going to hear. We heard those, that terminology earlier today. And the way that you'll see position today from a real school district design perspective is that this is not learn-as-you-go, as, as positioned earlier today as well. So a couple points. You will hear our team today speak to the quality. You will hear our, our team today speak to the procedures for transitioning students out of the program back to in-person when it's the right fit. That was a strong question that we've all had. You'll see the team today speak to how this is an agency-wide body of work that we've engaged in at, at the Department of Ed, but also in partner with our school districts as our superintendents have requested. Districts who have responded back to us through the waiver process, of the districts who responded back, ninety-six percent shared that they have retained or regained home, homeschool students. That's important. Eighty-five percent pushed on and responded back that they've transitioned students back to in-person when it was the right fit. So that means that they're watching for progress. That means that they are focused on the whole child and understanding what supports are right. I love to introduce to you today Adrian Usher, who's a district assistant superintendent, Danny Clemmons, who's a principal, and Dominic McCamish, who is an instructional coach and teacher for the Bullock County School System. They are a new program when it comes to online virtual and remote learning. They, they did not take the approach of emergency scramble to create something. They designed intentionally on instructional practices on the science of learning, you'll hear. We also have today, and I want to mention, they're not designed, they're not set to come to the table today, but our longest-serving online virtual and remote program in the state of Kentucky. Barron County Schools, we have Scott Harper, who is the district director of instruction and technology, as well as Melinda Owens, who is the director of counseling at Babbel. And it's important to note that they're here in, in support, but also if you have questions for our longest-serving program. So we have both ends of the spectrum, a district who is designing with intentionality for a percentage of students, and we, we know that it's a one or two percent of our, of our students, and then a district who has been doing this a really long time with high quality. So I'll turn it over to the Bullock County team, and engaging in conversation is where we want to be here.
Thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak. I'm Adrian Usher, Assistant Superintendent, Bullock County Public Schools. And just to kind of give you an overview of our Bullock Virtual Learning Academy, I want to start with our district mission. Our mission statement is to inspire and equip our students to immediately succeed in life. And as we know, coming out of the pandemic, there's a whole new world in education. And as we know, we are preparing kids for jobs today. They're not in existence. And so we have to constantly be looking forward, future-focused, and part of that was all built into our Bullock Virtual Learning Academy. And we have a set of core values in our district that all decision-making runs by. We, we talk about it. It's in our daily practice. It's students matter most, proactive innovation, future focus, service before self, and embrace differences and shared accountability. And those literally in every decision we make, every opportunity we're going to create for students. And something in Bullock County, we have shifted our language, is we want good instruction, but every time a child has an experience in-person or virtual, that is a learning experience. It needs to be an experience that they remember. That is going to be a part of who they are as an adult. And we have lesson plans, we talk about learning targets, but at the end of the day, we are about creating learning experiences for our kids to be able to immediately succeed in life. And that is what our Bullock Virtual Learning Academy is based all around. We serve grades two through twelve from across the whole district. We have about thirteen thousand students. This last year, we had about a hundred and thirty students. We are going to be starting this school year with over two hundred students in our school. That is due to a variety of reasons. As Damian was showing, those two example students we have, it's also been a great opportunity for students that have health issues that just maybe home hospital is not the best option for them, and they can participate in this. It also gives a lot of our students, for whatever reason, and listening to, I mean, mental health is a top priority of everybody right now, but I will tell you, pre-COVID in Bullock County, I can't speak for other districts, we were already seeing students unenrolling to homeschool due to mental health. We were seeing a high spike in that before COVID ever was on the scene. And we knew then we were going to have to do something to start addressing that, and then COVID exasperated some of that. So with that, we started working on a program, and our program has thirteen teachers, real, real teachers. Our students in the Bullock Virtual Learning Academy have access to all extracurriculars, all curricular instruction, all programs that any in-person student would have in our district. And, and we made sure that that was, they would have full access to all of that because we don't believe that just because a student may choose virtual that they should have options not available to them. We even worked for our high school students to have opportunities for pathway courses to industry search, whatever their wish may be, to try to work that out so that we have that there available for them. We have a principal, we have an instructional coach, we have a counselor, we also have a social worker, because we also know that the social emotional and mental health needs of our students are very important, whether they're in person or virtual. We do have an application process for that, and I will tell you, every student is different, and the program is not necessarily, you can have a great straight-A student, and then you can have one that is not, and that's okay, because the program has to fit an independent learner. And we think about in Bullock County, we have a graduate profile that is about communication, collaboration, and deeper learning experiences, and that's also a part of this. And students in that program have to be, we work on those, but they also have to have some of those skills to be a part of this, and parent involvement. We are very upfront with parents about the program. We talk to, and you're going to hear in a minute, from the principal and the instructional coach about how students are selected, all the conferencing that goes into talking to parents, and sort of the expectations, because we want children to be successful in this. And if, and if they're not, then in-person is the best choice for them. We most recently, towards the end, started a night school program with our Bullock Virtual Learning Academy, and we were actually able to graduate fifteen students that had dropped out of high school for various reasons. We already now have eighteen enrolled for the upcoming year, and these are students that are working at a job site, and they're out of town, and they're logging on to get on with our teachers to finish up their credits to get their high school diploma. So that is something else that we have started with our program as well. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Danny Clemmons, our principal, and he can talk to you about the day in the life of a student in BVLA.
Yeah, and that day in the life that I'm going to choose to talk to you about today is a second grader. I've been privileged enough, fortunate enough, been a school administrator for the past seventeen years. One of the things that I love every morning is actually doing the morning announcements, because I've always been a big believer in PBIS. I've always told students every morning, in-person, we're going to be safe, be responsible, be respectful, and really have driven home that message. And what we do in in-person every day, we start out the exact same way in our virtual school. So if I was looking at that second grader, the biggest thing that can happen that day for that second grader is, like any other student in Bullock County at nine AM, they're going to meet their teacher. So the first thing they're doing is logging on. Now, there's a lot of educational programs out there. I think it's, they're great. We use some of them, but we still want to lay eyes on our students in a morning meeting every morning. That's important to us. Again, that first part, be safe, okay? We're going to see that kid. We can filter out the background of their bedroom and living room. We don't have to see the house, but we got to see that kid. The second part that happens is now there's no substitute for a Kentucky teacher, because that relationship is starting in that moment. They're checking on that kid. Hey, how did last night go? Hey, how was your morning going? The typical conversations that would happen in an in-person classroom is happening virtually in that classroom again. That classroom community is being built at that time. This is where our cell activities are going on. Maybe our movement starts at that point. Kids are sharing out. But again, a lot of great things that are happening typically in that morning meeting and in-person, we're, we're mimicking, we're doing that virtually. Then the rest of their day goes, is typical as a second grader would. There's math, there's English, science, social studies, reading, all those types of things that would be in-person, again, they're doing in BVLA in that virtual environment. Now, I think one of the cool parts, one of the advantages is for this second grader. So in-person, there's a lot of management, so teachers got to take kids through the restroom break, special area. There's a lot of movement throughout the day. So there's not per se this movement, but it allows additional time for that teacher to meet one-on-one with kids. So every single day, our kids kind of get that one-on-one time. I've had a lot of students tell me, hey, Mr. Clemmons, I've gotten more one-on-one time in virtual school than I ever did in in-person. I hear teachers convey the same message, that they're able to know their kids better in virtual school than they are in-person. So kids are obviously working in that virtual environment, but what about, do they ever meet in-person? Do they ever interact with each other? Because we do think that that's important with our kids, and the answer is yes, they do. We, we take field trips, so we still go in-person field trips, whether that may be the zoo or the park or some type of science activity, especially for the little guys. We also do virtual field trips. We could go anywhere in the world. So this past year, I was able to go to the Louisville Ballet. Somebody had gotten on there with us. We talked about field trip etiquette and what to do at a play. I'm right there with the kids. I was a chaperone, so I even had my group chaperoning through that virtual field trip. Was with them, and during the break, I could get in the breakout room and talk to my group that I was chaperoning with and how that field trip was going. Any type of assessment where it's, whether it's local or state assessment, we have our kids to come in to do that. We still do that in-person. Again, I'm a PBS guy, celebrations, whether we bring the whole group in, or sometimes we just simply go out to the house, and we celebrate there with the kid, whether that's myself, the teacher, or the instructional coach there. We do interventions with kids in-person. We do enrichment with kids in-person. So again, a lot of different ways that we would do. So again, a lot of different ways that we would do what we're doing in-person, we do that virtually. Whether it's social services, we can do that. I do a lot of home visits, just to check on kids. Hey, how are you doing? The SRO goes in, just to check in to be another positive influence there. Another important piece to this is how do kids work their way from in-person to virtual school? Everybody's always talking about the fit. So for that application, like Ms. Usher talked about earlier, so you do apply into BVLA, you don't automatically get in it just because COVID is a thing, or for whatever reason that you would deem necessary that you think you should be into it. We got to find out that you're capable of doing it. You've got a support system at your house that's going to make you successful. And ultimately, at the end of the day, that we can support you virtually. So there's 23 different schools in Bullock County. So I have to communicate with these 23 different schools, whether it's their principals, their guidance counselors, their assistant principals, their teachers. The parents made the application, but I have to go back and really dig with all stakeholders to make sure that everybody's in agreement. We think that you could be successful in that virtual environment. Once those kids are selected, they move into BVLA. All of our students earn a six-week probation, okay? We want to make sure that we made the correct decision, what's best for that student. We don't want to harm them in any way to make sure that we can, again, provide those services that they can be successful in this virtual environment. Once we get to that six-week point, that's our checkpoint. Again, if it's necessary and we don't feel like they can be successful or we can provide those services, we'll remove them back to in-person. That's not a punishment. That's again, to make sure they get the services they need to be successful. We'll do another check at the semester and again, at the end of the year. So after year one with BVLA, two-thirds of our students decided to come back to us, which we were static about. Most kids had a successful experience in that virtual environment. Had a few kids that missed their friends. They did miss in-person, and that was okay. If they wanted to go back to in-person, we fully supported them. And again, we helped transition them back to the homeschools to make sure that they were successful. I'll turn it over to our instructional coach, Dominic McCamish, and he'll give you a few more specific examples.
Thank you. So we've been talking about the success that we've had with these students, and I would like to share some of our celebrations with you all. Just so that you know what kinds of success that we can have in our virtual environment. So one of them is that three times a year, we give district benchmark assessments in reading and in math. And for our elementary and middle school students, almost every single grade showed growth each, for each assessment, for both reading and math, almost every single grade, every time. Then our high school, for high school students, 100% of our seniors were per-secondary ready this past year. And that, we had a whole lot of kids get different certifications, such as the NOCTI and things like that, passing different exams, industry certs, things like that. We also do a lot of things that are, we also have a lot of data that's not quite academic. So we give out parent and student voice surveys three times a year. And you know, we look and analyze that data just as we would if it was academic data. And for 100% of our elementary students, they said that their teachers care about them and that they, those teachers are there for them if they need help of any kind. 100% of our elementary kids said that, 100%, on every single survey, all three of them. 94%, well, that was, this was our lowest percent of our middle school, said the same. So we had these questions on each one, and the lowest one was 94% that their teachers care about them and are there for them, you know, if they need help. Other, just, you know, other things on the surveys indicated that pretty much all of our BVLA students enjoy it and believe that it, you know, the virtual environment offers something for them that the in-person environment can't quite offer. Those are, those are going to be different reasons, you know, or different things for different students, but almost all of them said that. And then parents overwhelmingly, you know, indicated flexibility as one of the main benefits and one of the main things that they love about the virtual environment. We had a student attending class from South America this year when they were visiting family for a short time. So those are just some of the celebrations that we've got. Honestly, I could go on and on, but that's a quick overview for you.
We are constantly seeking feedback from our students and our teachers in the program. Continuous improvement is at the heart of all we do. And we want, this program has been successful and we want it to continue to be successful. So we're just constantly trying, you know, getting the feedback and making things better for our families.
So questions, comments from members of the board? Thank you so much for the Bullock County story. Thank you so much, Marty, for bringing it to our attention. The video was really illuminating and we appreciate your presence here today. Yeah, Patricia.
Quickly, we saw information earlier about kindergarten and preschool. And I am aware that yours begins at second grade. Are you looking at kindergarten, first grade, or is that not on the table?
Um, right now, we're not looking at kindergarten and first grade. You're talking to a former first grade teacher here. You know, we intentionally started with second grade, just looking at the foundational standards. We just, in Bullock County, felt it was more appropriate to start that at second grade, where you had, your fluency in reading is, you know, more up to grade level. And K-1 is very developmental. In addition to, you know, we also, when we started this, not to say we never would, but when we started this, COVID was going on. And we had a lot of kids, as I'm sure other districts experienced, that, you know, whether they were three-year-olds, four-year-olds are going to be in kindergarten, we did not know where they were, or what they were doing, or who they were with. So therefore, for us, especially with COVID going on, we did not want to start that soon.
It is worth noting, the Barron County team, Babbel, of course, they've been doing this for quite some time and have a lot of experience. They do offer kindergarten, first grade through 12.
And how do you fund this? How do you fund this?
How do we fund it? Well, we first started with ESAR money, but now because we are getting an increase, we're having homeschool families come back and join us. It's now becoming part of our, just how we fund other schools. So yeah, seek funding, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Do you have students that have discipline problems, like an alternative situation that are involved in this program also?
Not per se, like through alternative school or any types of programs that, but an extension or shoot of the program has been the night school for kids that have dropped out at 18-years-old. So again, they meet with teachers live, you know, get, get that one-on-one instruction. Or it could be an educational program that they do. So we had started that again in February. And then by the end of May, we were able to grab 15 graduates. Had kids working in it all summer. It's not stopped, you know? So that's been a nice shoot of the program.
It is worth noting, not to jump towards the regulatory language for tomorrow, but by definition, these full-time enrolled programs are not alternative programs.
But if I may add very quickly, we do have some students who in-person had behavior challenges. And switching into this different environment has actually been really beneficial for them. They've been far more successful.
Yes. Did you say you had 13 teachers?
Yes, we have 13 teachers. It spanned second, elementary to high school.
And is this their sole duty? I mean, this is what they do?
Yes, yes.
And are they housed all in one school? Or are they remote?
It's funny you say. Last year, we had, we had a middle school that has a smaller enrollment. So we had our middle school teachers housed. And really, some of the purpose of that was that they could participate in professional learning communities with other middle school teachers and kind of share that learning together and that data to have someone else to collect, even though they're in-person. It just kind of helped that connection. Our high school teachers are housed at, we have a strong partnership with JCTC. So they are housed there. Plus, we have a lot of dual credit already going on in our district. And our high school kids are coming and going on a regular basis. So it kind of made sense for them to be housed there, so. But we are looking to get everybody back together, yes.
What's the student-teacher ratio?
It depends, per grade, grade level, or which one. But usually, it's about 15 to 1 right now for the virtual school.
And they meet with that each student every day for some period of time?
Yeah, some days even with the older ones, we get into some more asynchronous. But we still have check-ins, like morning meetings, kind of starting out the day with kids.
Well, as you could, oh, yes, one more question. Holly, you get the last question.
So the teachers that are teaching this, were, did they volunteer to do this? Or were they recruited to do?
It was an application process, just like you would hire at any school. Yeah, it was, it was posted on our website and they had to apply and interview, just like any other. Yeah.
It's been gratifying to see that school districts in Kentucky are definitely pioneering and experimenting and implementing and showing us how to improve and create stronger programs across, as others come on board, building on what we learned from the pandemic and building on our vision of how to serve all learners with an appropriate format that is designed to meet their learning needs and the needs of parents as they engage as collaborators in this process. And thank you so much for taking the time to share with us. Come to us from your home to share with us here. And I thank the department staff for helping us dig into this as important, as an important substantive matter as we deliberate on policy. So appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Now, we will ask, let's see, Kelly? Kelly Foster? So the whole school improvement process, we'll be discussing that further. So please, Kelly, that's an aspect of the, an important service within the department. And appreciate your being here as a part of our work session so that we can understand where we are, where we need to go. And thank you, take it away.
Sure, thanks. Thanks for having me today. I found parts of your discussion earlier today very interesting. When we were, you all were talking about a person in a school, a teacher or administrator doesn't have to be an expert in everything. And I immediately was thinking about my field staff. And we've spent a lot of time this summer really defining what instructional process looks like to making sure that we're using the common language. So when we go into low-performing schools that do not have any type of instructional process at all, we're giving them really good quality profiles around that. And so I have some staff members, and this isn't part of my presentation, but I just have to say it, that, you know, instructional processing is their passion and their expertise. But we also have others that, you know, use data and analysis. So everything that you described, I was thinking about, you know, the dynamics of the people that we have working in these low-performing schools. And that's really what makes that continuous improvement work. So I asked to be on the agenda today, just to kind of give you all an overview of the school improvement processes that we have at KDE for a couple of reasons. Due to the pandemic, we have not identified low-performing schools since the fall of 2019. And we've had several waivers from the US Department of Education over the last couple of years and continue to support the schools that were identified in fall of 19. And so, once the data is released late September, early October, we will be identifying additional schools and hopefully also taking some schools off our current list. So I felt like it was probably appropriate to come to you all today just to talk to you a little bit about our processes and how we work with those low-performing schools. And it'll be a busy fall for us. It always is when we release data. But just wanted to talk to you a little bit about those processes and give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And Meredith, are you clicking for me? Okay, great. So I believe you have these slides. And briefly, we'll just talk a little bit about Kentucky's theory of action. Our school improvement program is not anything new. This is years and years' worth of work. I started working in this work in 2009. And when I was driving up the Kirby Road today, it took me back to when I was first identified to serve as a highly skilled educator. I spent a week long in the summer of 2009 here in this lodge for training. So I haven't been here since 2009. But this process has evolved over time with really using continuous improvement as the model. So thinking about Kentucky's theories of, theory of action for school improvement, we are very much have a commitment to success. And, and we are one of the few states that has anything in statute and regulation and a real true unified vision around school improvement. And I take phone calls from several different vendors and state agencies on a regular basis, trying to figure out how Kentucky has continued to be able to grow their school improvement processes. Diagnosing the cause of low-performing schools, you know, you really, just because you have test data that says you're in the bottom 5%, what does that really mean? So we spend time with those schools, once they're identified, going through a thorough review of their data. We also go through a diagnostic review process where we're on-site and we're interviewing parents and teachers and students. And we're looking at classroom observations as well as talking with administrators and, and community members. We provide intensive support. There is a branch in my office. My office is the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support. And I have a branch called the District 180 Branch. And we have four little people inside KDE and myself that kind of oversee the work. We have 96 field staff plus six continuous improvement coaches that support this work. And you've heard me talk previously about the education recovery staff. So we have education recovery leaders who have been principals, superintendents, assistant superintendents, instructional leaders, anyone in administrative role in a school. And they're, they're in those schools to coach and mentor the principal and his or her leadership team. And then we have education recovery specialists who are there to coach and mentor teachers. And, and those people have all been lead teachers, have years of, years of highly successful teaching experience. And then we have continuous improvement coaches that their main goal is to provide high-yield teaching strategies across the state, not just to our low-performing schools, but any schools that would like assistance. And then we have some training tools that all of my staff use on a daily basis to promote the system's work. PDSA cycles, building sustainable systems, 30, 60, 90-day planning, quarterly reviews, and a comprehensive school improvement plan. So just to touch a little bit about a diagnostic review. Once that school is identified as CSI, I'll be meeting with all of them, all of them in the fall. We will have meetings, depending on where the schools fall. We'll either do those out of Frankfurt, or sometimes we do those regionally based on where their schools are located. We don't want someone from far western Kentucky have to drive all the way to central Kentucky or eastern Kentucky the same. So my staff is very flexible. But they will go through a diagnostic review process. And we try to make that as painless as possible because we very much believe that the data that we receive from this diagnostic review is very important in helping developing their school turnaround plan, which will also help them develop their school improvement funds application. So they'll be eligible for federal funding. So it's a four-day review. It consists of looking at documents, presentation by the principal of the school, classroom observations, interviews, looking at their data. And we have a wide range of expertise on those, on those teams. We have retired principals, teachers, parents, higher education, KDE team members, really a diverse group of people looking at the diagnostic cause of the school.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What gets them on the list?
So this is defined by the federal government. To be a comprehensive CSI school, you fall in the bottom 5% of all schools in your state. So you're either in the bottom 5% or if you also have a graduation rate below 80%, those would put you in the CSI status. There's another category that's called targeted support improvement. And that means if you have a subgroup in your school that is scoring as poorly, as poorly as the bottom 5%. So let's say your free and reduced population is scoring as poorly as the bottom 5% of all schools in the state, they would be identified as TSI.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And once again, those aren't Kentucky definitions. Those are from the federal government. So our TSI or ATS I schools, we also offer two-day reviews for them. It's not as intensive because we know that they just have a certain population. But we go in with the same type of format. But we go in with the same type of format, interviews, observations, data analysis, and trying to give them some high quality feedback as they build an improvement plan. So turnaround planning, Kentucky is very fortunate that in state statute, all of our schools, not just our low performing schools, are required to do a school plan and as well as a district plan. So we're very intentional in the fact that we don't want our lowest performing schools, who are struggling the most, to have to do extra stuff. So we work with them to build additional pieces into their school plan that counts for their turnaround plan. And so by federal law, they have to have a turnaround plan to be eligible for federal funding for school improvement. So you can see the different pieces that are part of that turnaround plan. And my field staff that is in the building with them every day is working with them to take the results from that diagnostic review and develop the turnaround plan. One of the pieces that we think is very positive from ESSA is the requirement of evidence-based practices. And since ESSA went into effect, we have done a lot of work out of my office to focus on what is an evidence-based practice, a high quality evidence-based practice, and provide training across the state to all the schools, but especially to those TSI schools who are required to use evidence-based practices in their school turnaround plans. And with ARP-ESR funds, we have seen that term evidence-based again. So districts, when they were developing their ARP-ESR plans, also had to use evidence-based practices. So I feel very confident that we were ahead of the game as compared to some states as being able to provide support around the evidence-based practices. So our CSI schools and our TSI schools are federally required to have an improvement plan with those evidence-based practices. And we've listed some ways there that you can see how we've been training on evidence-based. The school improvement funds, this is federal funds that come to Kentucky. The way those dollars are allotted to us is your Title I allocation, seven percent of a state's Title I allocation is set aside for school improvement. And ninety-five percent of that seven percent goes directly to schools that are identified as CSI. So depending on your Title I allocation per state, that's where that money comes from. And so the last time that we awarded school improvement funds, that ended up being per pupil about $219.43, just to kind of give you an idea of what type of money we're talking about. So once they go through their diagnostic review, they have their school turnaround plan. We also assist them in their school improvement funds application. And basically, all of that money has to be aligned to their plan. So anything that you're requesting in your application for funding needs to be tied back to the evidence-based practice and your school turnaround plan. All right. Moving right along, just to talk a little bit briefly about the District 180 staff. Those are those four people that I have internally that really help organize all the behind the scenes work and support for the hundred field staff that I have that work in these low performing schools. The education recovery staff, I've already talked to you a little bit about those folks, but you can see, you know, the specific skills that they're doing every day, mentoring and providing support to school leadership, developing and supporting teaching staff, assisting with curriculum instruction and assessment alignment, job embedded PD, really coaching around the continuous improvement process and resolving issues with compliance and reporting. And the key piece about their work is, their job is to build capacity and sustainability. The role of the education recovery staff member is not to go in and change the school, move the school, do the work. The role is to go in and build sustainable systems that that school can continue to support once we leave. Their goal is to go in and build teacher capacity, administrator capacity. And that's really the only way this works, is to build capacity and systems. Looking at some data points, and once again, we haven't identified schools since 2019. So work with me a little bit, some of this data is old, but we'll have new data for you in a couple of months. We've been working with nine ATS I schools that were identified in 2019, nineteen, twenty school year, excuse me. And so they don't have staff that's there every single day. They have staff that visits as needed, just depending on what they have going on. But they provide the same sort of support that we do to our CSI schools, just not daily. Our continuous improvement coaches, once again, they are available to all schools across the state. And they really focus on high yield instructional strategies. They're not really going into a broken school. They're just going in to provide assistance based on a certain area or a certain need. But they are open to any school across the state. Quality staff is a key in this work. As I mentioned earlier, all of my folks have some, lots of experience, either in the classroom, as an instructional coach, as a building principal, as a central office employee, really having people that have street cred in these positions, ensuring that they're giving high quality advice and support to the districts. I've listed some of the partners that we use, our systems tools, data monitoring, high yield instructional strategies. We partner with Mike Rutherford out of North Carolina. He's one of the best around coaching. If you've maybe heard of some of our trainings that we do around Shipley. Basically, it's the Baldridge example that businesses use, but it's on the school level. And so we provide that training as far as classroom coaching as well as central office and administrator coaching. And then we also partner with the National Institute for School Leadership. We have a program called Lead Kentucky, and we train every year seventy-five to a hundred principals, assistant principals, central office staff, lead teachers in the skills to be a high quality administrator. Monitoring. Monitoring is a key word for us. We work with our schools to really not just fill out a form on what your data, what data you have, but what does that data really mean? We look at student attendance, teacher attendance, we look at retention rate, we look at state test scores, we look at formative assessments. So that is an ongoing process in our continuous improvement cycle, really using the data we have to figure out where we need to move moving forward. We will be hosting our ninth continuous improvement summit this fall. And I'll share this information with Meredith so she can share it with you guys. But it will be September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh at the Central Bank Center downtown next to Rupp. And pre-COVID, we were averaging right around eight hundred people. And we did not get to have our summit in twenty, but we did have it in twenty-one. And we're very pleased to have about five hundred and fifty. And so we're shooting for a thousand this year. And it's two days of wonderful professional learning that's provided by educators across the state. We do have KDE staff that present, but we also have usually ten to twelve schools or districts that are recognized as having best practices. And they're actually showing and presenting what's working in their schools. So I highly encourage you all to come to that. We'd love to have you. We also have two hub schools in Kentucky, Franklin Simpson High School and Polaski County High School. And both of those schools were identified as a low performing school in 2011 and quickly moved through the ranks and exited priority status. And so we use them as a learning lab. And so I have staff that work with those schools so many days a month. And we have schools from other districts come and go through, go through our hub schools to see what practices are working. We have anything going on from PLC training to data analysis to instructional coaching. So you can see some data there. Once again, this is a couple of years old because of COVID, but we'll have some additional data after this year. But we usually have quite a few visitors every year in our hub schools. And I think that's things, what teachers really appreciate, especially in Kentucky. We want to see our own doing the work. It's always great to bring in national speakers and people from other states. But in my experience, it is really, our work has really caught on and been sustainable because we've learned from each other. And people really value seeing what their neighbors are doing to make that improvement. So maybe if we do anything else offsite, we could do that in one of our hub schools. Once again, this data is a little bit old because of COVID, but hopefully in the next time I come back to you next year, we'll talk about this, we'll have some new data. But just to kind of show our results, we have been following this model since 2010. And we have been using this diagnostic review process since 2012. We have performed forty-two district level diagnostic reviews and a hundred and four school level diagnostic reviews. We did not do either during the two years of COVID. And through those reviews, we've issued two hundred and twelve district level improvement priorities and three hundred and ninety-nine school level improvement priorities. And I think why those numbers are interesting is, you know, we've served schools from Floyd County to Fulton County. And so our schools have a lot of different needs. So you're looking at two hundred and twelve district improvement priorities and three hundred and ninety-nine school level improvement priorities. And those improvement priorities are what they focus on when they're developing those school improvement plans. Some of our data, in eighteen, we had fifty-one CSI schools that were identified. Forty-four of those schools selected KDE as their audit and turnaround team. In 2019, twenty-seven of those schools exited status after one year of KDE intervention. So that's a sixty-three percent rate. In 2019, thirty-two new schools were identified as CSI. And all thirty-two of those schools selected KDE as their turnaround and audit and turnaround team. And just thinking about those thirty-two schools that were identified back in 2019, that represents a little over thirteen thousand students across Kentucky. Digging down a little bit deeper about the population, the percentage of white students served by CSI schools dropped ten percent in 2019. The percentage of African-American students served by CSI schools increased eleven percent. And the percentage of low income students served by CSI schools increased five percent. So our current state of our targeted support and intervention, or excuse me, improvement schools, in 2018, we had four hundred and thirteen Tier Two ATS I schools identified. And in 2019, four hundred and two of those four hundred and thirteen exited after one year of KDE support. And I think that's the last slide. So that was a, I tried to move through that quickly because I know you're tired and we've moved things around. But that's just kind of an overview of the support that we provide to schools. And in Senate Bill one, two thousand and, nah, twenty, I think, two thousand and twenty, one of the changes in that legislation was that I would need to bring to the state board a list of turnaround vendors. So if you've been following along in the Monday message, we've had that out, I believe, since August first, since August first. So that is out there. Then what will happen? There'll be a scoring rubric and a team, not out of my office, that will score those. And in October, I will be bringing you back a vendor list that you all will have to approve. So when schools are identified, I will have informational meetings with all of them to talk to them about the processes, the diagnostic review process, selecting your turnaround team, and that type of thing. So I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on what we've been doing out of my office around school improvement. I will be back in October to talk to you about that vendor list and have you approve that. And then any schools that are identified for CSI will have the opportunity to choose one of those vendors to support their work. So I'll be glad to take any questions.
So let's have a few, yes, after time.
You know, I really applaud what you've accomplished with this. You know, in manufacturing, you're making a product and they fail at the end. You make a list of the things that caused those to fail, it's called Pareto chart. If you really look at the schools that you deal with, what are the most egregious things or most things they fail at?
Number one is leadership.
All right.
It's, you know, just because you are a principal of a low performing school, you have to have a special skill set to do that. You may be able to do a great job in a higher performing school, or maybe even just an average performing school. But you have to have a specific skill set to really move a low performing school. So I'm going to say leadership is number one. Number two would be district support. You definitely can't turn around a school on your own. You can be super principal and have super teachers and super community support, but your district has to be on the same page with you because there's only so much federal funding out there. And money's not necessarily always the answer, but you really have to have district leaders at the table as well, helping determine, here's what our data says, what do we need to do with this data? And how can we do this as a team?
Okay. Very interesting. Thank you.
Who was your two hub schools again? Glasskey and?
Franklin Simpson High School and Polaski.
Other questions?
Yes. I went through the process. At the last school I was at, I started in August. In October, we were PLA. So I'm a better teacher because of the process. I can get emotional talking about it. But it was a lot of work. I never want to do it again. But I'm better off, my students are better off after all.
Thank you for sharing that.
Holly? Do you anticipate greater needs this school, this time as you're analyzing the data based on the last couple of years?
So, you know, the federal law says we identify the bottom five percent. So it'll be the percentage, the bottom five of elementary, the bottom five of middle, and the bottom five of high. So, you know, bottom five is bottom five. But I think one of the things we need to keep in mind is we have current schools. So those schools could still stay on the list, plus we're identifying a bottom five in elementary, a bottom five in a middle, and bottom five in high. So we could have more, a higher number of schools than maybe we're used to. But I definitely think we will see, you know, greater needs just in the whole, when we really go in there to look at the diagnosis of the school. I mean, I think it's just the learning loss that we're going to be focused with for several years to come.
I think it'll be interesting to see how our new visions for assessment connect with the things that are already like federally mandated. I don't know. I just feel like some of that's diametrically opposed.
Right. So I'm very much connected to Rhonda's office and very much connected to the work that Dr. Glass is leading around new assessment. So I understand that. But we're all on the same page in trying to move forward with possible new assessment system and what the federal government is, you know, going to allow us to do.
So in the interest of time, I do, we will be back on this topic again in October. And I think that we have come to understand that the work that Dr. Foster and her staff are doing, that KDE is doing in this area of supporting innovation and supporting improvement, is work that is viewed as collaborative work. And it is, I mean, that's good because that's really the only way to get it done, rather than provoking hostility by coming in as the font of all knowledge, the nor of all things, and just do what I say do. We've learned, fortunately, we're not repeating those mistakes. And I think we've seen folks come in to say that they have benefited so much from the partnership and the professional engagement with KDE, which has always made me very, very proud. So thank you for teeing us up and giving us a primer. It may do well to perhaps give us a little framework to reference as we are remembering definitions and as we go into our work in October. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Now, I know that it's been a long day, but we do need to stretch our endurance and have a conversation, not so much about goals, but how the goals have informed our work. We need to, we'll need to review our goals and preparation for reconsidering them in our October meeting. And perhaps based on a discussion we can have today, we can get a draft, a set of suggested revisions. But let me just kind of give a quick overview of the goals that we have. Certainly championing the Kentucky Coalition for Advancing Education and our efforts to reimagine our vision of education. Number two, to amplify our support of, and our work on behalf of the interests of minority students, their families, and minority educators, not just out of sympathy, but out of a determination to make things different. And number three, to work with EPSB to really different. And number three, to work with EPSB to really advance policies and work that will strengthen the education pipeline, the education workforce pipeline in our state, including the diversity of that pipeline and the power of the work that they are ready to do. And working with our higher ed education providers as essential collaborators in that effort. Number four, create the, creation and implementation of the profile of a learner or graduate. And number five, to gavinous support for a very strong, fully-developed, educationally-appropriate early childhood program that is full-day kindergarten and is universally accessible. Now, you know by our own experience that we've made significant progress on these goals. Some, we've got to come back and reexamine where we are and how we're going to get there, and the role that policy will play. So Brian, if you would, Brian Perry, if you will come to the table and help us, give us a bit of background regarding our policy context and the role it might play, and how we will play in it. We are particularly interested in a topic we haven't had a chance to discuss much today, but that is the issue of the educator pipeline. Every school district in the state calls it a crisis, and the HR officers are desperately trying to staff everything, but certainly the classrooms across the state. And that is notwithstanding the significant trauma and crisis visited upon the school districts in eastern Kentucky. We're very close to them. But we want to begin the conversation, begin our thinking. We may, in fact, be doing virtual work groups before October, but this is the beginning of the review of goals. And in order to know where we need to go, we need to understand where we are and what kind of game are we playing?
Sure.
Right.
So, yeah, so I'll give you a quick rundown on what's on the radar for the next session and then even a little further down the road, because I think it'll help you kind of understand what conversations have been happening, where we think things are headed right now. And then we can start talking about how those relate to some of your all's goals and if you need to shift some things around. So obviously, flood relief is going to be now a top priority. I suspect that we will see that happen in a special session. I don't think they're going to wait till January to do that legislation because that would delay, you know, for five months, getting those funds out to the impacted districts. So I think that we'll start hearing about a special session here pretty quickly once they have a better idea of what's needed, how much is needed. And I would imagine get things lined up beforehand and pretty much do it in a week. So that'll be before the session, the regular session starts in January. So once we get into January, school safety is going to be a top priority. Those conversations have already started happening. Commissioner was on Kentucky tonight, just this week, discussing this topic. The question here is, what do they, what can they do, or what are they willing to do that they didn't do back in 2019 with the School Safety and Resiliency Act? That was a pretty comprehensive piece of legislation. It really did quite a bit, did a lot of different things. And so now the question is, what, what could they do that they're willing to do? So that's kind of where that conversation, I think, is going to go. I think mental health, student mental health will be a big part of that. I think there'll be some conversation, we've already had some conversations, and I think there'll be more about either expanding or revamping the existing tip line, the stop tip line. So right now, it's kind of essentially a land-based, maybe a web-application-based tip line. But I think there's going to be some interest in moving that to a app, right? So bringing it kind of into the modern era. So those conversations have started happening. But, yeah, in terms of what else, I think maybe hardening this, you know, hardening the schools, right? So how do you, what could they do to update some of these older buildings that don't have the modern safety standards, the vestibles, or, you know, have lots and lots of windows on the ground level? What can they do to make those schools more secure? So I think those will be some of the conversations around school safety. The vice chair, already mentioned teacher recruitment and retention. I think there's a lot of opportunity here for the education community to get something done. So this past session, we saw the General Assembly really take some bold steps as it relates to the healthcare workforce. So I think that there's a precedent now for them to do something. I think it's incumbent upon us as the education stakeholders to help them decide what that is, right? And so to that end, I think that we may have kind of a draft of some suggestions later this week coming out of Dr. Darnell's office. So we'll kind of, but, see where that goes. But broadly, I think you can think of it in terms of, what do you do to get people into the pipeline? What can you do to keep them in the pipeline as they move through their education program? And then, what do we do in those first one to three years when we, retention-wise, what can we do to offer them more support, incentivize them to stay in the profession? And then on the back end, what can we do in terms of a promotion in place, master-teacher type of pathway that would offer essentially financial advancement in the classroom, right? So right now, we don't want everyone to go into administration. You just heard Dr. Foster talk about, we do need strong leaders, right? But not every single person needs to go into that field. So what can we do to keep some of those really talented teachers in the classroom on the back end? So I think that's where that conversation's headed. I think there's a lot of options. Right now, there is an existing teacher scholarship out there. I think it's funded at about a million dollars a year. It's a conversion scholarship. No one really likes that. So I think there's a real opportunity to offer up some type of vision for what that scholarship could be. I think when we talk about, you know, that middle part of the pipeline, when Dr. Glass presented to the interim joint committee on education earlier in the summer, paying student teaching, paid student teaching was a big part of that conversation. So, you know, can some part of that scholarship be used to do that? But then we have to get down in the weeds, right? So things like, how many teachers, student teachers do we have every year? How much do we want to pay them? What's the rate going to be? How many days? What's the total? So that's where we'll have to get really down in the weeds at some point on some of that stuff. In terms of other things, I think the praxis exam is going to be a topic of conversation. We've already heard this starting to bubble up. I think there's real interest in some alternative exam options or certification options, and what those might look like. So I think you'll see that conversation continue. We shopped around some cleanup language around House Bill five-sixty-three this last session. This is a piece of, this is the legislation that does the open waters. I think there's still a lot of lingering questions. Like I said, we shopped around some suggestions last session and didn't get anywhere, but we may offer those up again. There are some personnel changes in the legislature that might open the door for that conversation to go a little differently this time around. So that's there. I think what happens between now and January with charter schools, that may be back on the radar, one way or the other. So that's kind of the lay of the land, I think, at the moment. If there's any questions about any of those items, or if you've heard rumblings about other things that you'd like to mention, yeah, I think that gives you a pretty good idea of where we stand right now. But obviously, as we've seen in the past two weeks, you know, a lot can change very quickly. So that's where we are today.
Well, I think the, I'm going to suggest a perspective for our work as we think about goals and our work with policymakers. I do believe it's incumbent for us to come forward with proposals, with ideas that are good for, that actually contribute to getting the work done that we care about. And in particular, the work associated with addressing the equity agenda. And we know, I mean, the research doesn't confirm a whole bunch in education, but it confirms this, the most important in-school factor associated with school, with learning improvements for low-income kids is the teacher. And I mean, not a teacher there to do on a mission other than excellent professional practice. A teacher who knows how to do it, who knows what it is, who knows what it's not, and who understands the requirement to advocate for the resources and support necessary to get it done on behalf of the learning interests of these students. We have got to find those teachers for every underperforming school that Dr. Foster and those identify, and have the means to be confident that they will be served in the way that they should. So I think the educator pipeline is something that we should be working with colleagues and others to design a affirmative proposal that we're really willing to fight for. It was clear that we wanted full-day kindergarten in the last session. I don't think it was, nobody tried to hide it. We wore it proudly, and we supported it. We got pretty close. And I'm suggesting that our professional obligation requires us to take a similar attitude where it comes to the quality of the education workforce and how we meet that. And I remind you, I mean, it is like, sometimes, I don't like embracing the adage, a crisis isn't a crisis until it's confirmed by disaster. But folks, you look at any school district trying to open, and any superintendent will tell you, it's pretty close to disaster time out there. So, let's get busy.
And I will, I'll just add to that. I think that those are really good points. I would add that none of this is simple legislatively necessarily, right? And to that point, it's not unusual to see something like full-day kindergarten take multiple sessions to get done, right? So you might see it introduced in a chamber of one session, and it gets assigned to committee. It maybe gets a hearing. It comes back the next session, maybe gets out of that same chamber. Now it goes over to the next, you know? And so it can take two, three sessions for some of these big things to get done. And I just say that as a, prepping you all to not get discouraged as you go forward. If you see, if you work hard on pushing an agenda, especially a particular item, and you don't feel like it's moving fast enough, just keep in mind that it does take time. Frankfurt moves pretty slow for the most part. So just keep that in mind. It takes multiple sessions to get a lot of these big things done. The last thing I meant to mention a minute ago is, as you're thinking about your goals, also be thinking about how they relate to the twenty-four budget. I know we just finished a budget session. We just got a new budget that enacted on the first of last month. But this time next year, we will be well on our way to another budget session. And so it's never too early to start priming them on what budget items might be necessary as it relates to the goals that you all have in mind. Does that make sense? Because it's literally never too early for us to start priming that conversation. And I think, the good news is, I think that some of the, they in our chairs are already starting to think about the next budget and asking some questions on our end. So it's encouraging to see them being involved this early, so.
Other comments, Steve? No? You want to talk about the?
The praxis. I, one of the best student teachers that I've had, and I've had many excellent ones, and one of my block students, who was also very successful, both of them have missed on the praxis by maybe one or two points. And it becomes defeating. They begin to feel defeated. Their time in college is a waste, basically.
Yeah.
And they should be in the classroom right now. They're excellent teachers. They should be in the classroom right now. And they can't get a job because of one or two points. Do you see that changing? When we're in as big of a crisis as we are in now? And yes, I think it's a crisis.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's absolutely a conversation to be had about what could the alternative be. But this is where I was trying to say that we have to really come forward and say, you know, here are three options, or here are two options, or here's the option that we as KDE and KBE think you should consider putting in place. But I do think that they're aware of that issue. I think the flip side of that is, you know, to Dr. Glass's point about always making sure we maintain the integrity. So whatever we propose, I think we have to be able to say, this is maintaining the integrity of the profession that's in line with what KDE and KBE have been pushing, because we don't want to move in the direction of Florida, you know, where anybody now can teach without a bachelor's degree. So, you know, it's finding that balance, right? So it's putting forth a proposal, but being prepared to answer those hard questions when they say, well, you know, you all don't want to dilute the profession, but now you're saying you want to, okay, we can have that conversation, but just be prepared that, you know, we've got to find that balance. Does that make sense?
I just don't want to see a slide into a situation like Florida.
Absolutely. But that's where I think we, when I say we, you all and the commissioner have to kind of, you know, decide, what do we want to ask for? And let's go ahead and start nailing down some of those things and getting it out there so we can, again, go to the legislators that we know have an interest in this. So before they go too far down the road with whatever legislation they have in mind, we can kind of set up some meetings and start having that, you know, offering up suggestions. And they may take it or may not, but we certainly need to be providing options for them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's the honor or not.
Professor Thompson, welcome.
I will tell you, in higher ed, we're going to be pushing to get rid of the praxis. We're going to do that, for sure. And obviously, that has nothing to do with a baccalaureate degree. I fully agree that we have to have quality in place in teacher education. I fully agree that we have to have a mechanism of weeding more people in, especially people of color, low-income teachers. I believe in all of that. But there's very seldom has a standardized test ever indicated quality. And the idea that we should be able to come together, I know the commissioner and I are talking about this, how to come together and do exactly that. So we've got to create a more robust way of doing this as a P-20 effort, because it's going to take both of us at the table. We're having this conversation. I'm having, I had it twice this week already. So the idea that it's going to take probably a strong proposal, but I will tell you, at least from the folks I'm talking to, and Brian may be talking to the same folks or different folks, that they are ready for us to come to the table with something strong with a suggestion. That's one thing. Number two, they will say they're not going to reopen the budget, but the budget will be reopened this time. So to what extent, I don't know, but they do have one-time money. So there are some things that I think we have an opportunity as a board to consider, what would some of those one-time dollars be used for in moving forward the agenda that you're trying to move forward, as well as preparing for the next bania? But they're also, they'll also probably reopen the budget for other items. So I would say that the questions that you're posing, the things that you're putting on the table, the arguments that you're making, are arguments that people are really wanting to hear now in a variety of ways. And I can tell you that in higher education, we're on board as partners with making this happen.
Thank you for that. It's encouraging. I think that, you know, certainly, this agenda is one that, this issue is one that will take an industry-wide effort to address and really make anything, anything real happen. In addition to the assessment, and I'm going to say documentation issue, the licensure issue, there are other products out there and quality systems that we can, we can suggest. But I'm going to say, we know that there's sometimes quite a not-so-near-miss when it comes to the clinical component and getting it really structured. And I'm talking about the relationship between the ed prep programs and the leadership at the district level and the school level to integrate those novice practitioners into an environment that supports a really authentic clinical experience. And this is not, it's easy to say, it's not necessarily easy to do, and not based on anybody being deliberately recalcitrant, but it means restructuring, it means innovation, it means being very intentional. it means being very intentional, and everybody adopting the same outcome measure so you know if you got it done. So I mean, I think the outcome measure is not insignificant as it relates to actual practice, but the clinical component, if it doesn't happen well, you'll never know if the teacher is ready for novice practice. And, you know, as an independent practitioner, I don't say working alone, but as an entry-level practitioner, if you don't measure right, you don't know. So I would love to see us understand how we can work together on that. Is there a policy lever, or do we want a policy lever? You know, how do we bring ourselves together in a much more disciplined way to make it happen?
A couple of efforts underway to make the board aware. On the larger question of the, the teacher recruitment retention pipeline, KASA is organizing a broad stakeholder group to work on a set of unified recommendations. Dr. Thompson and I are co-chairing that effort, and so I'm optimistic that a lot of the goals that will emerge from K-12 and higher ed will, will come together for a nice set of recommendations for the legislature out of that effort. Simultaneously, Dr. Darnell and the EPSB have been in discussions, and EPSB has the authority to change the praxis exam. What's in the statute is that there's a requirement around having a test as a condition of licensure. The statute doesn't specify what the test is. Historically, EPSB has chosen the praxis, as has, have most other states chosen the praxis as the mechanism to satisfy the language that's in that. But we don't have to, or you could choose an alternate route besides the praxis exam as a condition of licensure. So all those options are on the table. I'll continue to urge Dr. Darnell and the EPSB that they need to have a plan of action, or we may see a statute that directs them to do something, or takes the authority away from them and just puts it into law, exactly what's going to happen. But I think, to Dr. Thompson's point, there's a great deal of energy behind doing something different than praxis right now. And, and to Ms. McCrory, your point, there, there is, I think, a broader recognition that praxis hasn't, hasn't served us well, that it has excluded quality individuals that would, would be great teachers, or has discouraged individuals from becoming teachers who may have been very effective for us. And we need some different options. So we want to make sure that we do that in a way that doesn't undermine or water down the profession, because we can get in this vicious negative cycle of attacking public education, creating our own workforce crisis where people don't want to enter the field, and then watering down the criteria for what it means to be a teacher, always trending toward, if you don't have, if you aren't a felon, you can be a teacher. And we don't want to get in that place. So we, we do have to, I think, in these conversations around praxis, or what is the, what are the conditions that have to be met to satisfy that initial license, that we have a mindset toward quality in that. But quality can be demonstrated in different ways. And just like the conversation that we had earlier, there are a host of different skills and competencies that we think educators and young people need now that aren't captured very well on standardized tests. So I, I think the, the conversations, the energy around praxis and where that is, is part of the larger existential question that assessment is having right now. So we, when we look at the assessments that we use for, for Kelly's work, or that we use to identify or rate schools, there are lots of questions around, is that getting at the concepts that students really need to be successful in the future? And I think the same questions are arising around our assessments. Are these really valid predictors of future success?
Well, you know, fortunately, there's work out there that we can reference and benefit from and leverage, and here's the thing. We are, Dr. Todd, you, you speak of this often. We are in the process of becoming. We are learning. You put what you know into useful tools that may last for the time that they last. The trick is to know when they're worn out and not giving you the service that you bought them for in the first place. And I think perhaps praxis has reached that point, and I say that as one who worked for Educational Testing Service when praxis was brand-new, and replacing something else that had worn out. So, I mean, we're not talking outrage or rebellion. We're talking about keeping pace with modern technology that may serve us well, and I think in assessment, there's modern technology that will serve us well. Just, we, otherwise, we wouldn't dare envision portrait of a graduate, right? Because how would you ever know? Well, we think we can know. So, Brian, that's a really rich list of, of ideas. We have a lot of, we have a lot that we can learn about meeting the mental health needs of students and, and our whole industry, based on experience. And I'm curious about what we, what the legislature might be interested in regarding school safety. I mean, they talk about it with ease, they pass laws, and then they don't fund them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's the big question, right? So they did a big piece of legislation three years ago in Senate Bill One, the School Safety and Resiliency Act, that did a lot. And so now the question is, what, what can they do and will they do on top of that? I think to Dr. Thompson's point about having some one-time money, I could see them setting up some sort of grant pool, right, to stretch the dollars a little further, to upgrade, to do, to do those hardening projects, right, to add a vestibule, to replace some windows, or to upgrade locks, those types of things. I tend to think that's probably the most likely. And then some sort of mental health piece that ties in, student mental health that ties into the safety component is probably the next likely, so.
Yes. Thank you for that, Jason.
Thank you. I, I think building on that, what the areas that can be extended on to SB One from 2013 and from 2019 include funding the required SROs from last year. That's something that they can and should do. The cost, the total cost of that's going to be over $100 million if they really wanted to fully fund it. So that's, that's not an insignificant lift. The state has a, a tip line for school safety. I think it's under, underutilized.
Do people know about it?
Exactly. No, I'm not sure people do know about it, or enough people know about it. And I, I think it's under-resourced. So that is something that they definitely could do. There's, there's a lot that we can do around mental health, particularly around anti-bullying efforts and programs and supporting those in the state. I said on KET last night, and the, our team did the research on this to provide all the data, 87% of school shooters were victims of bullying. And 49% of kids in Kentucky schools say that bullying is a significant problem in their school. We can do something about bullying. So that's, that's a path forward. Building security or target hardening, those are physical capital investments that could be changed. They could, they could take action on that. And then I think the, the political question that the legislature is going to have to deal with is, what are they going to do with the federal law that encourages them to put in place some red flag steps? Or other, are they willing to entertain any kind of conversations around gun regulations or gun safety? That may not politically be in the cards for us, but the evidence, we have enough mass murders and school shootings now that, regrettably, we have a body of evidence around what are effective policies. And gun regulations are effective policies at reducing the probability of a mass murder or gun violence. So whether or not the legislature chooses to engage with that, I think is a question politically for them to discuss. But it's, it's one of the elements, in addition to the tip line, SROs, mental health, bullying, building security, those, that's the, I think, the menu of items that they could consider.
You know, there, you might want to take comfort in, we're out, it'll never happen here, but, I mean, I just think at this point, we, we can't take any comfort in that. We've seen all manner of communities be, fall victim to shooters, and...
The, the probability of a school shooting happening still is very low. Schools are the, one of the safest places for students to be statistically, but, you know, it's one, it's one of those trends that we talked about this morning. The, the frequency of mass murders and school shootings are not reversing. They are exponentially increasing.
Well, let's, you know, when, when, in order to avoid despair, you have to do something, right? And we have a number of, of angles on this pretty daunting list that we can work, and I think work to the benefit of our learners across the Commonwealth. So, Brian, closing comments. Get busy? I mean, is that what you're going to tell us?
Just before Brian closes out, I would also mention that we had a very productive meeting with John Akers at the Center for School Safety, with Ben Wilcox, the state school safety marshal, with Kentucky Homeland Security, and our staff that have expertise, Kelly Foster and her team, and Rob and Kenny, they have expertise in school safety as well. We had a very positive conversation with them about moving forward with a unified set of recommendations around school safety, and all of the topics that we talked about were, were brought forward. So that, that hasn't been completed yet, but it, it was, I think, encouraging in our initial lengthy meeting that we were able to identify some clear next steps for Kentucky to take.
That is encouraging. And so we'll be hearing more about suggested policy proposals, ideas, and direction for us. It is clear, though, that we would want the, we would want to work closely with the ed preparation providers, as well as our K-12, you know, side of the equation. Dr. Thompson and Dr. Glass make a good team, and knowing that you're leading the KASA effort is encouraging. It's really, really gratifying. So thank you for that. We've had a, thank you, Brian.
Oh, no, thank you. I was just going to say, I just want to thank you for extending the day to have this conversation. It's important. It's important that we, you know, get ready to present you all something in October, hopefully, with some more draft-ready legislation. So thank you for extending the day a little bit so we could have this conversation.
Great, thank you.
So I think we're closing up, and Vice Chair Robinson will, will do that with the power of her gavel and all that. But I did want to point out that Sanford Holbrook, the superintendent Robertson County, I met with him this morning. He provided me with a crate of all this honey, and he said, "This is for the state board." So all of you have some honey that was grown at their high school, at their K-12 school campus. So they have an agriculture program and honeybees. So, so that comes from Robertson County. And after we gavel out and break, I would love if, if y'all could take your honey and take a picture by that. I will send it to Sanford. It will make his year, probably.
Oh, that is so sweet. Literally, as well as figuratively. Anything else for the good of the order? It's been a long, but very productive day. I want to thank everybody for the determination to get here, the, the steadfastness of your participation. It's, it's really been a good learning experience. So if there is no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so much. Thank you.
Second?
Announcement for next steps.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, let's, as a part of discussion of that motion, Meredith.
We can go ahead and adjourn, and then I will tell you the next...
Okay.
So if we want to go ahead and...
All right, let's finish this motion, then. Anybody not in favor of adjourn?
I second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries.